City councillors, ladies and gentlemen, Lord Provost.
Good evening, everybody. A very happy new year and all the best for 2023. Roger.
Thank you, Lord Provost. Welcome to this meeting of Dundee City Council, which is being held remotely in terms of section forty-three of the Local Governments in Scotland Act 2003. All members in attendance are able to fully participate in the meeting, which is being recorded. Should any member need to leave the meeting for any reason, can they please use the chat to advise of this? If a member loses their connection, they should make every effort to rejoin the meeting. But if this is not possible, the committee services officer will note their absence for the remainder of the meeting. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain out of the meeting until invited back in. Would all members please mute their microphones when not speaking to avoid background noise and turn off any smart speakers? Please start the meeting with your camera on. Your face will appear on the screen when you are speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn off your camera and see if this improves matters. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the chat when the relevant item is called. The convener will then invite you to speak. Would members of the press and public please not post messages in the chat? Where items are for noting or where there has been no disagreement expressed, the convener will call for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the chat, otherwise the item will be agreed. Please would members not use the chat for any other purposes as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate? Although we are operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the council and requires standards of behaviour and discussion that are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders apply to the proceedings and the terms of the Councillor's Code of Conduct also apply in the normal way. Does any member have any queries regarding this procedure? There are no queries, Lord Provost, so I'll now ask the committee services officer to take a roll call for the minute. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now take a roll call for the minute and I would ask if members could confirm that they are present when I call their name. Lord Provost.
Present.
Councillor Alexander.
I'm here.
Thank you. Councillor Anderson.
Present.
Thank you Deputy Lord Provost Cardell.
Present.
Thank you Bailey Dawson.
I'm here.
Mr Unackla.
Here.
Thank you Councillor Flynn.
Good evening, present.
Mr Hunter.
Good evening, present.
Mr Lynn.
I'm here.
Bailey Roberts.
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor Rome.
Good evening, present.
Bailey Source.
Yes, I'm here.
Councillor Short.
Happy New Year, I'm here.
Thank you. Councillor Smith.
I'm here.
Councillor Tolland.
Hi, I am here.
Thank you. Bailey Keenan.
Present.
Councillor Crookshank.
Present.
Councillor Finnigan.
Hello, I'm here.
Councillor McHugh.
Present.
Councillor McIrvin.
Present.
Councillor Mullowin.
Present.
Councillor Scullen.
Present.
Councillor Shears.
Present.
Bailey Wright.
Present.
Bailey McPherson.
Good evening, present and a happy new year.
Thank you. Councillor Coleman.
Present.
Councillor Creighton.
Good evening.
Councillor Duncan.
Here.
Bailey Scott.
Here.
Thank you very much. And that concludes the roll call.
Thank you. Thank you, Lord Provost. Lord Provost, members of the council, there is one item of business this evening, the minutes for information and record purposes.
Any questions? Does this agree? Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Provost. That concludes the business of the city council. Could I please ask you to remain in the chair, Lord Provost, for the meeting of Dundee City Council as Fleming trustees? Mr Wardle.
Thank you very much. Firstly, are there any declarations of interest? And there being no declarations, that takes you onto item two, which is the Fleming Trust audit accounts, together with accompanying report, both of which are for noting.
Thank you. Any questions on this? Can we do this? Thank you very much. Roger.
Thank you, Lord Provost. That concludes the business of the city council as Fleming trustees. The next committee is the Neighbourhood Services Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Menney. Happy New Year to everyone. I understand that Veronica is going to take us through the agenda, so I'll hand over to Veronica.
Thank you. Item one, declarations of interest. Are there any declarations? No. Okay, we'll move on to item two. Item two, update on ash dieback disease in Dundee. You have the report before you.
Thank you very much, Veronica. This report updates members on the current status of the ash dieback disease, which is now affecting ash trees in Dundee and across the whole of the UK. It's anticipated that ninety per cent of all ash trees in Scotland will be affected over the next two decades, requiring the removal of millions of trees across Scotland. The report advises that the Environment Team are developing an ash dieback action plan. This involves coordinating detailed surveys of all the ash trees within Dundee to prioritise appropriate management and identify resources that will be required to manage this issue over a long-term period. To date, all major roads, schools and sheltered housing areas have been surveyed and the felling of trees which have been identified with severe infection has already commenced. All ash trees at stage four of infection within lower risk locations are also prioritised for removal before the end of March. The Neighbourhood Services Workforce Development Plan is looking at the creation of specialist apprenticeships within the forestry and arboricultural team to upscale the workforce. And it is proposed that a further report on this issue will be brought back to the committee during twenty-three, twenty-four, when additional details will be provided on how the issue is going to be managed going forward. This report is for noting, but this report is for noting, but I can see that an amendment is being proposed by councillor Crookshank. Has that councillor Crookshank, would you like to come in at this point?
Thank you, convener. If there's any further questions on this, should we be taking them first? Or will I go ahead with the amendment?
Well, I can see one question. So if I take that first and I'll come back to you councillor Crookshank. Question from Bailey Scott.
Thanks, convener. Sorry, I'm using a different device tonight and it's taken me a while to find out what all the buttons are for it. I have two questions. And my first one is about the recovery plan to replace the lost ash trees. There's going to be an awful lot of them will be going. And will the replacements be ash trees or will they be a different species that will be planting for the replacement? And my second question is about the upskilling of staff to help with the work that the forestry team has to do. At the moment, when I make any inquiries of the forestry team, they're very helpful, but very apologetic because the responses at the moment are they're still dealing with the after effects of Storm Arwin. So routine tree work isn't being done because of that. So I just wanted to make sure that this action plan is going to ensure that there will be sufficient resource to deal with business as usual and the routine tree work.
Okay. Thank you, Bailey Scott. I apologize to councillor Creighton. I've taken you in the wrong order, but if officers would be happy to answer Bailey Scott's questions first. So the first one was about the recovery plan and replanting and the second was on upskilling. Is that Elaine? Shall I bring in Tony?
Yep. Yeah, I'm happy for Mr Boyle to respond to those, convener.
Thank you.
Thanks Elaine, thanks Bailey Scott and thanks convener. In terms of the species planting, we will not at this stage be promoting the planting of ash trees as replacements for the ash trees. As the convener alluded to at the beginning, we've got up to, I think it's ten point seven million mature ash trees across Scotland will be affected by this disease, the best estimate. At this stage, it isn't a disease-resistant cultivar or variety of friccyanus the ash genre. So therefore it wouldn't make any sense to replant with ash. However, as we've seen with things like Dutch elm disease with elm trees, if a resistant cultivar becomes available, I can then look at that. The committee will be aware that later on at this evening in the agenda under Policy and Resources. Sorry, in fact, it's later on in this agenda, we'll be talking about a climate-resistant, climate-resilient woodland. We're looking to plant up twelve acres of woodland, which is some positive news, but that's for later on. But at this stage, we won't be planting ash species until we can get that situation resolved in terms of disease-resistant cultivars. In terms of upskilling, yeah, what we're trying to make clear in this report this evening is that we require additional staff and additional resources. We're looking to upskill and give, spreading it wider amongst our grounds maintenance and other members of the frontline workforce, the opportunity to be upskilled in this highly specialised area of tree surgery and tree management. Hope that helps, convener.
Could I just come back and just ask for confirmation that routine tree work will continue while all this is going on?
Mr Boyle.
Yeah, convener happy to answer that. Yes, Bailey Scott, we will be doing our best to manage what we can within the existing resources. The reason we have, one of the reasons we put forward what we put forward tonight in terms of this report is we require at this stage a balancing act about what's the highest priority. Like convener had mentioned earlier on, that we're already tackling some of these, what we call level four, stage four, most severely affected ash trees. But there's that hierarchy of urgency is undertaken on a regular basis by the tree management teams. At this moment in time, we can't do everything with the resources we've got. That's why we're saying within the report, we need to upskill additional staff to cope with this, this new issue that's arising through ash dieback. I hope that helps.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you.
As it stated in the report, at the date of the report, over a thousand trees had been identified and a hundred, over a thousand trees had been surveyed and a hundred were requiring action. And the plan is that that will definitely all be undertaken over the next couple of months. Sorry, can I come back to Mr councillor Creighton? Sorry, I took you in the wrong order. Can I have your question, please?
No worries and happy new year, everyone. Firstly, I'd like to thank officers for the helpful report. And I think it's sensible that we can learn off the councils in England for their experience in tackling this problem. And with reference to the information in four point two point four on the costs, I appreciate it can only be an estimate at this moment, but it says it could go up to a potential eight hundred thousand pounds per annum. And this is obviously hugely significant. I was wondering if officers are confident, given the existing budgetary challenges that we have, could the department be able to finance this and resource the work? And Bailey Scott did touch on it, but on resource, given the very small forestry staffing that we have in the council, is the department competent that the staffing resource will be enough to tackle an issue of this magnitude?
Thank you councillor Creighton. My understanding is that officers are actively involved in, you know, talking to the Scottish government about additional support as this is a national problem that's going to get worse over the next twenty years, but I'll let the officers come in to give more detail. Mr Boyle?
Yeah, thanks convener and thanks councillor Creighton. The main, one of the main parts of the report tonight is talking about this recording for additional staff. We don't have, as I mentioned in my response to Bailey Scott earlier, we don't have the requisite number of staff just now to cope with this issue. That's why we're looking at upskilling primarily, because there isn't actually enough staff required for this whole issue. You can imagine eleven million trees across Scotland nationally. So we've got that issue. I can advise that our local authorities are in actual fact identifying larger numbers in terms of the cost. I think Glasgow has identified thirty-eight million as an estimate over the next twenty years. East Lothian, twelve million over the next twenty years. But at this stage, it will take a bit of time councillor Creighton. And this is what we're saying within, over the course of the next year, to try and blown up the specific details relative to Dundee. Obviously, we're finding this issue just now. We expect to find more of that. In terms of the solidifying and getting something more granular in terms of costing, we will be able to do that. The more we get, the further we get on with this. And the last point regarding, do we have enough resources? We don't have enough resources, quite simply, to deal with this just now. And what we're estimating we're going to have to deal with, we'll deal with the most urgent stuff as we're doing just now. But we will not have enough resources as a council to deal with this. And there's going to have to be, I would imagine, some dialogue with the Scottish government and others around how this could be funded. But I can advise that our local authorities are in the same position. We have not made any direct contact with the Scottish government ourselves as a council yet. But I know that other local authorities are approaching COSLA with a view to them making that kind of broader approach to represent all local authorities in Scotland with a view to trying to get some dialogue moving on with this. And as well as that, I know that the Institute of Chartered Foresters and the Scottish Tree Officers Group and APSA are also picking up the cudgel in this respect. So there's a further dialogue happening at a broader level of the Scottish government on this aspect.
Thank you, Mr Boyle. Can I just check? Have we contacted COSLA specifically individually as a council yet?
Convener, we've not done that yet because I thought it was more appropriate at this stage to advise all members from the Neighbourhood Services Committee. This is an issue and maybe to get some, that's something we could pick up in terms of the further update report we've mentioned in this report.
Thank you. I can't see any more questions. And as I said at the beginning, this was a report for noting, but I'm going to come back to councillor Crookshank and if you can explain your suggested amendment, councillor Crookshank.
Thank you very much, convener. The amendment is very simple. I move as an amendment to add the following to the recommendations, two point two, that the chief executive writes to the Scottish government requesting that additional funding be made available to local authorities to come back ash dieback. And as Tony has said in his preamble, there is an intention to do that. I'd like to thank officers for the work that they've done so far and for the planning that they're going to do in the future. But from sources, ash dieback is an ecological terror. Sorry, I've lost my place. Yes, please just text me. I'll get it back. Oh dear. Sorry about that. I've got it back now. Ash dieback is an ecological terror which is expected to average up to eighty per cent of the UK's ash tree population and could take up to a hundred years to recover. Environmental analysts believe the disease could cost the economy up to fifteen billion pounds in that time, most of it in the next ten years. We therefore acknowledge that this is a major challenge which should be addressed. But with around eleven million ash trees distributed across Scotland, we in the Labour group believe that this is a national issue which warrants a national solution. This isn't a burden that should fall on the shoulders of the councils, which are already cash-strapped and struggling to deliver the most basic of day-to-day services. An estimated eight million pound bill over the next ten years would be yet another major costly pressure on the city's finances. And I'm sure every local authority in the same position as us finds itself reaching the same reluctant condition, conclusion, sorry. We ask that the city council call upon the Scottish government to marshal national resources and money to assist in resolving this situation. I move the amendment. Thank you.
Councillor Crookshank, I could see that councillor Shears is seconding you. I am happy to support your amendment because I think we all recognise that this is a national issue that's going to impact on councils over the next ten to twenty years. So I'm happy that we send a letter saying that there has to be a national response and finance. Are you happy with that proposal?
I'm happy that the proposal has been accepted. Thank you.
Thank you.
You may want to hear councillor Shears. I don't know if that's appropriate.
I think, I think we've accepted it. So I think we're fine, given the volume of work we have to get through tonight. I think that'll be fine. Thank you very much for raising that councillor Crookshank.
Thank you, convener.
Veronica, can we go on to the next item?
Aye, sorry for the delay there. Item number three, environmental improvement works twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four.
Okay, so in this item, the report is basically detailing a number of environmental improvements as part of the twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-three, twenty-four programme. All of the projects have been designed to improve and enhance open spaces and to make them safer and more attractive places to enjoy for residents across the city. And there's four specific projects requiring approval here. One, fencing and gate improvements at Barnhill Cemetery, new signage at Riverside Nature Park, landscaping improvements at Caird Park and the creation of pocket parks at Lorimer Street and Moncur Crescent. Are there any questions about any of these projects? I can see none. So I'm just asking if we can approve all of the projects listed.
Convener, I have indeed typed in the text a few minutes ago, in fact, saying that I had a question. I think there's a bit of a problem. I mean, this happens quite frequently with yourself in terms of not actually seeing the order. But anyway, if I'll ask my question, if that's okay, convener.
Yes, absolutely.
It's in relation to Riverside Nature Park and I welcome the fact the park's now been open twelve years. And I think it does indeed make sense that the signage is updated. There's been a number of initiatives over that time. And we have an excellent friends group, Friends of Riverside Nature Park, who do a lot of good work with regard to the park. And I'm glad they have been in, you know, included in terms of the consultation on what the new signage will actually have on it. My question's very simple, convener. I was just really wondering if Mr Boyle could confirm that the local elected members in the West End be advised of what the new signage will actually look like? If we can just see it before it actually goes in place, because it would be quite nice to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Boyle.
Thanks, convener. Thanks, Bailey McPherson. Yes, I'd be happy to organise that, of course. That's appreciated. Thank you.
And Mr Boyle, I was just going to check. I know it will come up later in Policy and Resources, but the signage will also incorporate, hopefully, the new designation of the park if that's approved.
Indeed, convener, that's correct.
Now, I'm double checking. I've enlarged my screen, Bailey McPherson, so hopefully I'm not missing anyone or taking them in the wrong order. I'm assuming that we're approving these projects. Thank you. Veronica?
Item number four, tenders received by head of design and property. These are for your approval.
Okay, so there are seven key areas of investment here. I'll take them in turn. I could see councillor Flynn is, and I can see some questions already. I was going to take them in turn and then ask for questions after each one. So the first project is in relation to replacing the lift at the Richmond Fellowship Building in Kingsway West. Are there any questions in relation to that specific? Councillor Flynn, is your comment in relation to the first tender? Nope. Councillor Duncan? I assume not. Right.
No, sorry.
Okay. So can I ask if this tender is approved? I can see no one dissenting. The second tender is a good news story. So this is an investment following funding from the Scottish government in a total of fifteen parks that have been identified with community officers. So Balgawen Avenue Park, Baxter Park, Camperdown, the Greendikes Play Area, Clatto Park, Clay Pots, Fairmuir, Fintry Drive, Fintry Side, Hilltown Park, Millamains, Peebles Drive, Sandyman Street, South Road Play Park and Stobbsmuir. Do I have any questions in relation to any of these tenders? Play parks. Is that Bailey McPherson?
Thanks, convener. I was really just wanting some clarity from officers regarding where we are with the play park upgrades. As I understand it, Scottish government gave a commitment that they would have every play park, they would fund an upgrade of every play park in Scotland by the end of the current Scottish parliamentary term, which is twenty twenty-six. Now, we've had two tranches which cover just fifteen of our play parks. And what I was really wondering was, where are we in relation to the totality of our play parks that will require upgrade? And I was really also wondering, are there any criteria from Scottish government in relation to what should be spent on each play park? I appreciate the play parks vary in size, but if I take these as an average, that would be fifteen thousand being spent on average in relation to each of these play parks. Now, I look back at a community-led upgrade at Roseangle a few years ago. And I think something like, the council contributed ten thousand towards that, but I think it actually cost, and thanks to the community, because they raised the rest, a hundred and seventy thousand to bring that up to what is a very high-quality play park, I wouldn't deny. So what I'm wondering is, where are we in relation to achieving this by the end of the parliamentary term in terms of all our play parks? And also, is there an expectation on the part of Scottish government as to the amount spent per play park? So there's a sort of guarantee of consistency in terms of quality and extent of works across all our play parks, not just here but across Scotland?
Thank you, Bailey McPherson. And can one of the officers respond to the questions from Bailey McPherson?
Yeah, I'd be happy to respond, convener.
Thank you, Mr Boyle.
And thanks, Bailey McPherson. The short answer is there isn't really specific criteria that maybe drills down into detail that I suspect, Bailey McPherson, you're asking for. And on the wider question about where are we in terms of progress, if you could allow me to consult with my officers and we can provide you with a written response on that, if that's acceptable? Yeah, that's, that's fine. And I'm quite happy it circulated to everybody. The point I'm really wanting to know is, where are we on this? And also, is there a consistency? You know, fifteen thousand sounds okay, but it's in relation to the the cost of actually upgrading equipment at some of our play parks, I suspect would be insufficient. And I'm just really wanting a reassurance that we're going to have an equality in this so that all parts of the city get a, you know, play park of sufficient quality by the time this programme is complete. But I'm more than happy that Mr Boyle just comes back to me.
Thank you, Bailey McPherson. I've also got questions on play parks from councillor Shears.
Yeah, thanks, convener. Of course, welcome the additional money for play parks being upgraded. Unfortunately, in my ward in particular, play parks have become a bit of a magnet for antisocial behaviour. As I'm sure Mr Boyle will know, I've got a couple of emails into him every week about it. So I'm just wondering, is there any specific plan with these new upgraded play parks in terms of preventing antisocial behaviour? Certainly, we see a lot of graffiti, small fires being started as well. So is there any reassurance we can get about antisocial behaviour at these play parks?
Mr Boyle?
Thanks, convener. Thanks councillor Shears. I can't say there's any specific information I can give you in relation to the set of proposals that's in front of you just now. These are about improvements. In terms of the antisocial behaviour, we do pick that up piece by piece, locality by locality in a kind of very measured way as best we can. I think we're all aware of the proliferation has been of vandalism in our play areas, as councillor Shears quite rightly points out. There are no specific proposals in terms of the stuff that's in front of you tonight in terms of the play area improvements. But it is something we've kind of, we're keeping a watchful eye on, but nothing I can give you in terms of concrete proposals around antisocial behaviour. It's just something we need to manage by the way the resilience.
Okay, thank you, Mr Boyle. Councillor Duncan, you also have a question on play parks?
Yeah, thanks, convener.
Yeah, thanks, Convenor. Um, I'll just stick to the, the, my ward, the fairy ward. So firstly, to welcome the, the improvements to the, this park of, over the last year or two, I've had a few complaints from residents about the state of the path there. So it's, it's good news, as you said at the beginning. My question though really is, I'm mindful of various other play parks in, in, in my wards, which for quite some time have been sort of suffering from my issues like missing swings, missing basket swings. The very welcome improvements at Gillis Park, I did ask, for example, for the little fence to be put around the, the, the new play park. Um, and that's, that's been quite some time. Now, my question is really, although it's good to improve facilities, um, possibly we should be maintaining the ones that we've got first in a nutshell.
Mr Boyle.
Thanks, Convenor, and thanks councillor Duncan. Yeah. And actually, what you've got in front of you, the large part, if not all of those locations are around existing locations and, and the, and the improvement that we're putting forward. But the point's not lost on me. And I think that councillor Duncan's aware that we do go, do our kind of level best to try and make sure that we get those short-term improvements in and to, to kind of, to avoid the, the, the situation escalating as it often does once there's kind of one little bit of vandalism within a play area. But we are doing that and that's what these proposals are putting forward. But take the point that councillor Duncan's making.
Thank you, Mr Boyle.
Thanks very much, Tony. Uh, because I mean, that, that's basically the point. There's, there's no criticism at all. I mean, I'm the first to welcome any improvements. But it's just important that we kind of look after what we've got. So thanks for that.
Point taken. Councillor Coleman, I think you also have a question on the play parks.
Thank you, Convenor. Yes, quite, I mean, quite a number of the, the ones mentioned in my ward, and I do welcome that. However, in particular, I'd like to ask about St Leonard's Place Play Park. And the officer will be aware that I've raised this before. It's not mentioned in the tender, but I was assured that there would be upgrades and repairs. And this concern that may have been dropped from the plan, um, or, or is the funding coming from elsewhere? But I would be grateful for an update on the situation in St Leonard's Place Play Park. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Coleman. Mr Boyle, is that something you could answer here or is it something you just respond to by email?
Convenor, I think I'd be better responding through a written response to councillor Coleman on that one. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I can't see any other questions. So do we agree that we are happy to accept the tender and do the work on these fifteen play parks? Yep. And the third tender is about parth, uh, park path improvements to sixty-one thousand pounds there to do with improving the steps and access up the hill and drainage. Do we have any questions on this tender? Are people happy to approve this? Thank you. The fourth one is an investment on the law, forty-five thousand pounds to improve steps, reduce fly tipping, replace bollards, refresh and improve the artwork and undertake environmental improvements, many of which were suggested by Friends of the Law. I'm particularly pleased about this one. And do we have any questions from members? People happy to accept the recommendation? Thank you. And the fifth tender is to do with planting climate resilient woodlands. And this is a phenomenal investment, three hundred thousand pounds. And it involves planting twelve hectares of new native woodland across three sites, Riverside, Balghaen and Clatto. It'll enable us to expand the woodland cover in the city, mitigate climate change, improve biodiversity by creating new habitats and meet some of our targets in the Climate Action Plan and the Biodiversity Action Plan. I'd just like to make the point that this investment has been greatly assisted by the award of a hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-six pounds from the Nature Restoration Fund. And I wanted to congratulate the team for securing that grant. And so can I ask if people have any questions for officers? I can see. Is that councillor Flynn? Councillor Flynn?
Yeah, thanks, Convenor. It's not really a question, but just to reiterate exactly what you've said, this is really welcomed. I think the fact that we're actually going to be planting trees for the to address some of the climate issues we do have is surely got to be welcomed across the city. And twelve hectares is not, nothing to be laughed at. I think the investment is really welcome. I think the three sites will benefit from this with the the benefit to the climate, but also to create a new habitat, as it says within the report, for the wildlife and creating a more of a, a, a park area for what everybody can actually enjoy. I have to say, that's actually welcome. Can I just touch upon the Dundee Law, which you mentioned just before that as well? Really welcome that within that. In fact, that's actually been requested by the Friends of the Law. And we've actually just worked with them to actually make sure this actually happens. Along with that, if it's okay to jump in about the play parks, I really welcome the fact that the play parks have been done. And I think it's important to that, the investment within the city to what we're trying to do to improve it for the local communities is something that's got to be highlighted. I have a question on Marriott Steps, but I'll wait till we get to that one, if that's okay.
Thank you, councillor Flynn. I've got a note that you have a question on that, so I'll come to that later. Are people happy to accept this tender and get on with this great work? I think there's going to be community planting at each site, so delighted with that. Thank you. The second last one is Eurobin replacement, which is basically replacing the enclosures and for the Eurobins in Yarrow Terrace and Dockert Terrace. Any questions on this tender? I can see none. People happy to accept that. And the final one from me tonight, and I know councillor Flynn has a question on this one, is the Marriott Steps. And, um, so the replacement of the existing steps and handrails at Marriott Street and Monker Crescent and repairs to the boundary wall at Coldside Nursery. Councillor Flynn?
Thanks, Convenor. I, I really welcome this again, but I just have one question for the officers with regards to accessibility. And was there any consideration put in to actually put a ramp in as long as, as well as the steps to increase the accessibility to that park from Marriott Street and the turn from Monker? Just like any officer feedback on that?
Would one of the officers like to respond on the access point?
Maybe I could ask Louise Pritchett, head of housing and construction, to respond to that one?
Thank you, Eileen, and thank you councillor Flynn for the question. The engineers did carry out a full feasibility study on the suitability of providing ramp pathways from Marriott Street to Monker Crescent. And, and following recommendations within the report regarding the cost, the complex design and environmental impact, a decision was made to proceed with option one, which as within the report is to replace the existing steps with precast concrete steps, including, um, such as anti-skid strips and twin stainless steel handrails regarding the surrounding of the ground.
Okay, councillor Flynn, do you wish to come back on that?
Yeah, just to clarify, it was more the feasibility, but and, and sort of creating a ramp was a problem or was it just financial?
Yes, it was both financial and also in terms of the environmental impact. So and I'm not sure if the head of design and property services is on the call this evening. But furthermore, I think we could provide more information around that feasibility study, councillor Flynn, out with this, this meeting.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you very much.
Okay. Bailey Wright, I can see that you have a question on this one. Bailey Wright, sorry, you're on mute.
Oh, sorry. And I'm actually surprised to hear that, eh, statement because that particular area has a lot of people that are actually in wheelchairs and are on sticks and find steps very difficult. And the, the Coldside Roundabout is a big, eh, it's a long, long way to, to get to where you want to go if you're going in that direction. So it would have been useful actually if, because there's a good bit of land there, if they could have just sneaked in, you know, um, a bit of a ramp, it would have been helpful for people, also for children, women with their children in prams and buggies rather than have to attempt the steps. So, um, I don't know.
So my, my proposal is, Bailey Wright, I think that if we approve the tender to improve the, the steps as they are now, but we as Coldside councillors perhaps have a further discussion about an accessible ramp.
Well, that's acceptable. So thank you for that.
Okay. So I see Bailey Keenan, is this to do with this tender?
Yeah, you, well, yeah, seeing, seeing it's obviously local councillors in the area and including yourself have got concerns about it. Then should you not just park it in the meantime and then do the feasibility study on whether the ramp is, is needed? And if it's just that additional cost, it may well be that you put these steps in the place of where the ramp would be. In which case that would be a real waste of money. So it would be better that we come to some decision as councillor about what was needed and what would be best for kids playing in that area that perhaps have got a disability.
Thank you, Bailey Keenan. My understanding that the ramp would be separate, but I'll ask Louise to come back in at this point.
Thanks, councillor Anderson. And I would require further information on the engineer's report that was done. But my understanding is that a full feasibility study has already been carried out. As I understand that this tender was due to be brought up last year, but it was delayed for this feasibility to be carried out to determine if a ramp was able to be installed.
So I wouldn't want to hold the work up further.
Convenor, Convenor, why wouldn't we given the choice? If there's a feasibility study being done and it's a bit about whether you can afford it or you can't, then why wouldn't we given the choice?
I, I'm sorry, I don't have one of the officers. I've got Eileen, if you would like to come in at this point.
Convenor, thank you. I mean, I, I think in, in relation to this particular work, I think it's important that we, we do the work to, to repair, sort of repair to the, the steps. And that work will, will need to be done. Happy to bring back, um, some, some information around the, the feasibility study for, for members wider consideration. But I think we do need irrespective of where we go with the ramp, the, the steps do need to be replaced and, and, and improved. And I would, I would request that at least we are allowed to proceed with that work at this stage.
I would agree with that, given that there's been a significant delay so far. And so I would be proposing that we accept the tender and be, you know, be updated on the feasibility studies, local members. Councillor Flynn, I could see you wish to make a comment.
Thanks, Convenor. Just to let me back in there, I think I'd just like to, as a ward councillor like yourself and as Bailey Wright has accepted the fact of your comments, I'm quite comfortable in actually what Louise has actually come back with, uh, send back more information on the feasibility study. And I think if there's any issues with that, I think the ward councillors would follow that up anyway. And I think Bailey Wright's accepted that as well from your offer. So I don't know what the, the remaining ward councillor, but I think your recommendation to move ahead, get the steps repaired as soon as possible is really the important part here. And then we'll look at what the feasibility study said on top of that. And so I quite agree with what you're saying, Convenor.
Okay, so can I take it that that is agreed? Thank you. And I think that is us for our committee this evening. Thank you for your attention and involvement. And I'll hand over to the next convenor.
Thank you, convenor. The final committee this evening is the Policy and Resources Committee.
Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year to those that I haven't already spoken to. Willie, we'll just move on with the business.
Yeah, thank you very much. Firstly, are there any declarations of interest? Yeah, and there have been no declarations, anything shown title.
Oh, sorry, Willie, you're, you're too quick. Councillor Bailey Dawson.
Yeah, he was a bit quick there. I couldn't type quick enough. That's why the hand shot up. So it's in relation to the leisure and culture report from myself, Nadia. And I would imagine Charlie wanted to raise the same as well as being on the board.
Thanks very much. We'll take that as noted.
Okay, thanks very much. Item two, then, is a minutes. And you've got a minute of personnel appointment in the subcommittee of seven December two thousand and twenty-two, pension subcommittee and pension board of twelve December two thousand and twenty-two. Both of these are for noting.
Can I take these as agreed? Okay, thanks very much. Next item.
Okay, takes you on to item three, Scotland's future. This item has been placed on the agenda at the request of Bailey Sawyers.
Okay, I'll hand straight over to Bailey Sawyers. Willie?
Yeah, thank you, Convenor. Um, if maybe if committee services were able to circulate the motion, and I'll just start speaking to it. I must admit, um, you know, given we all went through a democratic process only a few months back, less than a year ago, resulting in us all being elected to the council, I was a wee bit, um, astonished over the, um, reaction in this morning's courier, where people seem to think giving Scottish people a say on their own future is a stunt. Um, I, I kind of, maybe I'm just being a bit naive as I get older, but I thought all twenty-nine of us here would have assumed we were Democrats, we've been elected on the basis of people's votes. And I would have thought we felt that people being able to vote for things was quite important, but perhaps not. Um, I just wanted to point out a few facts before, um, colleague councillor Toulon will expand on some of this, but the election to the Scottish Parliament in May twenty twenty-one, um, resulted in the highest ever number of votes for pro-independence parties, the highest ever vote share for pro-independence parties, the highest ever number of pro-independence MSPs. And of course, as we know, a pro-independence majority government was then formed between the SNP and Scottish Green Party. Seventy-two of the hundred and twenty-nine MSPs were elected in manifestos committed to a referendum. So that's quite a lot of votes, quite a lot of seats and mandates that should be delivered on. Um, you know, the Scottish government has a mandate for a referendum within this parliament, and that's unquestionable. Um, I want to just to give some quotes. And some of these might surprise you, but, uh, I don't know exact quotes, but anyway, current Tory UK Prime Minister Rishi Sunak is on record saying that an independence referendum should be held after Brexit. Well, we're quite a bit after Brexit and quite far down the consequences of that action. Um, Labour leader Keir Starmer is on record as saying an SNP win at the twenty twenty-one Scottish election would be a mandate for an independence referendum. Well, we won the twenty twenty-one Scottish, Scottish election. The Welsh Labour First Minister told BBC Radio Four, he backed an independence referendum after the SNP won the last Scottish election. Anna Sauer, mandates come from the electorate in an election. It should be the people of Scotland that decide when the next referendum is. And I think by voting for pro-independence MSPs, seventy-two out of a hundred and twenty-nine, the Scottish people have quite clearly shown that they've got an interest in having a referendum. Going back a bit further, John Major said, no nation could be held irrevocably in a union against its will. Even Margaret Thatcher, somebody who I rarely quote, says, as a nation, the Scots have an undoubted right to national self-determination. Should they determine on independence, no English party or politician would stand in their way. So the motion tonight is not about the merits of other rise of independence, and I'm sure we could have further debates about that. But the motion tonight is about pressing the case for the Scottish people to have a say in their future, in our future. You know, I don't see how unionist politicians, predominantly in London, but some in Scotland, can claim that we're a union of equals. And then when we ask, well, we don't want to be part of this union anymore, and they just say, now's not the time. And that's not acceptable in a modern democracy. Might have been acceptable five hundred years ago, but it's not acceptable now. And I think we have to be making a case, and I hope yourself as convenor and leader of the council, um, to write to the prime minister and, and make that case. Some people will probably say, well, this has got nothing to do with the council. Well, I think we're all Democrats and democracy is something we should be very interested in. The council's got a proud record of speaking on things that some might argue have nothing to do with the council. A number of years ago, um, I can't remember exactly when, but councillor Hunter, I believe, moved that we give the freedom of the city to Ainsan Chukie. And sadly, a number of years after that, we moved that the freedom of the city be revoked. We've had motions over the years, relatively recently in fact, about deportations to Rwanda. Now, immigration, the last time I checked, wasn't a city council function. That doesn't mean we shouldn't we shouldn't as local leaders be giving a position on such policies. Councillor McPherson, I believe, Bailey McPherson, um, a couple of years ago, brought forward a motion to brought forward a motion to do with Palestine. Last time I checked, we didn't have any responsibility for foreign relations, but the council was quite happy unanimously, as I remember, to accept and agree on that motion. So the argument that this has nothing to do with the council is completely baseless and it's just been brought forward by people who really, on the face of it, and I hate to say this, but on the face of it, they don't want to allow the people to have their say. And that seems to be rather anti-democratic, to say the least. So with these words, convenor, I will move the motion and hand over to my colleague councillor Tolland.
Thanks very much, Bailey Sawyers. I'm just going to, because there is obviously a number of contributions here. What I'm going to do at this point is very briefly is ask Roger to clarify how we will deal with them. Because from my reckoning, we have your own motion and then a further amendments from Craig, Kevin and Derek, which will need to be seconded. But Roger, can I just bring you in at this point so that everybody's clear on the process?
Thank you, convenor. I would suggest that in accordance with the council's normal practice in these matters, we first of all deal with any questions that elected members may have. Then if the questions are asked and answered, or there are no questions, we could then ask for all the amendments to be circulated so that before all members. And at that stage, convenor, you can decide whether or not a short recess is required. And then we can move to deal with them in the usual order, which would be major opposition group, followed by the Liberal Democrat group, followed by Bailey Scott.
Thanks very much for that clarification. I'll come to councillor Tolland to second and then I'll open it up and we'll go through the process as you described. Thank you very much. Siobhan?
Thanks very much. Just give me two seconds. I want to start by talking about the economy, because contrary to what many people seem to be saying, the concept of democracy and this economic crisis are not separate issues. They are completely integrated and part and parcel of the same democratic process. And as social democrats, as I think many of us are, I think we should always recognise the democratisation of the economy being a central aspect to that. Now, what we've had is a succession of extreme right-wing conservative governments that have enforced upon us a decade of austerity, a hard Brexit in the middle of a global pandemic. And only a few months ago, we had a kamikaze budget that literally broke our economy and wiped 7, was it, sorry, 1.7 billion pounds off the Scottish economy overnight. Now, this horrendous damage that's been done has been done without our consent and against our will. There was no mandate for that from any of the Scottish Parliament. Now, Scotland's strategy to recover from this mess is very different from that of the UK's. And I think we have to recognise that, quite significantly so. It's not just that we tend to work on more social democratic lines. It's also the fact that actually our choices at this moment in time run increasingly along the constitutional lines. Do we recover as part of the UK or do we have a strategy to recover as an independent nation? Now, Willie has talked about the democratic mandate that was given in the Scottish Parliament last year. And I think that that is a historical fact, it is a matter of historical record. By the democratic terms that have been set down, the right to a mandate on an independence referendum is clear and it's unequivocal. Westminster's refusal to accept that or even discuss that with us is a democratic outrage. And I think as Democrats, we all should be quite horrified at that, not laughing and scoffing as some of you has been, especially those with the names Liberal Democrat in their name. The mandate that we have was one of many mandates. We have a strong history of pro-independence parties. If Westminster refuse to engage with the mandate that we have, then actually what we have is a crisis in our democracy in exactly the same way that there are numerous other crises that we now face. We cannot be a voluntary union of nations if that nation is having its democratic choices suppressed and blocked by another larger nation. The Supreme Court decision takes us to the point then that we have literally in a situation where Westminster are seriously running the risk of breaking our democracy in precisely the same way that they've actually broken our economy. Democracy is under threat, as it is across the globe, and it's under threat through denying the people of Scotland and the Scottish Parliament, the Scottish government, the mandate to have a referendum. Now, the economic crises or the other crises we also face are huge and they're complex and they're terrifying as well. But there's one thing that must be certain in this. We cannot pretend that there is no room for democracy when dealing with these crises. We cannot treat democracy as if it's some kind of distraction from the crisis that we face. And it's certainly not a stunt either. It's the exact opposite, in fact. The driving force of our recovery must be democracy, a society built on the democratic choices of its people. That starts with Scotland having its right to choose on our own future. If we are Democrats at this historical juncture, after a clear and unequivocal mandate for an independence referendum, we only have one option. We must defend democracy against its attack from an extreme right-wing Westminster government. We need to vote for the motion because we need to defend democracy.
Thank you very, very much, councillor Tolland. I'm going to reserve my comments to the tail end of this. So what I'll do at this point in time is ask for any particular questions per Mr Many's advice. I don't see any particular questions, so I'm going to continue going through the amendments as they are within the chat.
Very convenient. Myself and councillor Crookshank have comments that aren't related to amendments.
That are not related to amendments?
No, just comments on the item in general, and then the Labour group will move their amendment.
Okay. Do you want to do that before your group have moved their amendment?
Councillor Crookshank was before me, so.
Councillor Crookshank, do you want to speak before your party have moved their amendment?
Yes, indeed I would.
Be my guest.
Thank you very much. It's been discussed many times in this chamber before that there are things of great consequence which cannot be directly controlled by those of us on this council. I'd argue that the constitution of the United Kingdom comes under that category. It's important, yes, but is it really for us to spend valuable time debating here? There are hundreds more, other more pressing matters that this council should focus on first, not straying beyond its remit as a local authority. We need to alleviate a crushing cost of living crisis. We need to get a grip of tightening budgets, which are at the mercy of rampant inflation. We need to improve attainment in our schools. We need better standards in health and social care. We need to work with partners to tackle the causes, symptoms and impacts of antisocial behaviour. We need to build more homes. We need to reinvigorate our city centre. And of course, we need to deal with the million pounds and wasteful double spending to fix the Olympia and replacing the roofs. That's just a snapshot of the long shopping list of priorities which demand our attention. Doesn't the leader of the administration agree with me that they should be dealt with first before he becomes pen-piled with the Prime Minister? The Scottish government has already decided to spend millions of pounds of taxpayers' money on the question of independence. And the First Minister has made it quite clear that that's where her focus lies. She's clearly happy to butt head with the Prime Minister all on her own. So if she's going to do it, then now more than ever, we need a council which is focused on the day job. Let's get on with delivering for Dundee. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. I'll come to councillor Shears next.
Yeah, I'll keep it quite short, but it's really a comment on the wording that the UK government urgently works with the Scottish government to facilitate a referendum. Well, as far as I'm aware, that's not Scottish government policy anymore. The decision's been made following the Supreme Court judgment that there is going to be a de facto referendum at the next general election. So this just seems like a pointless request when the UK government, we know, won't agree to a second referendum and the Scottish government don't want one.
Thanks for your brief comments, councillor Shears. I'll move on to the list before me. So councillor Duncan, I'll come to you next to move your amendment. Can I suggest and ask that everybody is agreeable to all of the amendments being circulated to all elected members at this point so that we've all got sight of them? Yes, please do. Thank you very much. Okay, councillor Duncan?
Yeah, thanks, convenor. I was going to say Happy New Year. I mean, I was quite keen to begin this year on a a not beat collegiate approach, given that, you know, all of the people of Dundee, whatever way they think about a Scottish referendum or not, are facing huge challenges, absolutely huge challenges. And I have to say, it's simply disappointing to see a motion put forward by Bailey Sawyers, which she knows in advance has zero chance of attracting unanimity. And to be lectured about democracy, well, I'm flabbergasted. I mean, it wasn't so long ago that your very own First Minister defined the referendum, the real actual referendum that we had as a once in a generation opportunity. Of course, only a day or two had gone by before people of a certain persuasion were going on and on and on about we want another referendum now. Well, to my mind, that's not the way that democracy actually works. You know, we can't keep doing a referendum every day of the week and twice on Sundays until you get what you want. That's not grown up. It's not democratic. Now, I come back to like, you know, the UK government, the Holyrood government. It's a bit like the pot calling the kettle black. I think this is about the third, possibly fourth time at committee that I have said in recent years, the facts and figures of the finances reveal a harsh truth. Namely, that neither Holyrood nor Westminster has ever prioritised the local government. We had always a Cinderella. And again, this is where we are yet again. So with regard to this one, this motion which has appeared so airway in the new year, to me, it's got nothing to do with democracy. It rather strikes me as some sort of weapon of mass distraction, which certainly I won't be falling for. And I don't think most people in Dundee will be taken in by either. So by all means, as a council, and I mean people of all parties, let's try and pull together to do the best that we can here for all of the people of Dundee. I think that's what they would expect. And so my motion is very, very brief and I hope unconservational.
Thanks very much, Craig. I think councillor Creighton is seconding you. Michael?
Yep, yep, thanks, convenor. More than happy to second councillor Duncan on this. And I won't take too long because I won't waste any more time than is needed on the subject. I was elected almost seven months ago now, and I'm really here along with everyone here to deal with the proper issues. Cost of living crisis, the drugs death crisis in our great city, developing our city centre along with so many other things. And I'm actually really angry and disappointed, especially coming from Bailey Sawyers. If it was a newly elected councillor, I'd probably understand it. But Bailey Sawyers knows fine well this is nothing to do with Dundee City Council. And I'm really angry because I'm here, I'm the youngest councillor in the council, I'm here to learn. Especially off the Baileys who've been there for about 15 years. We're all here for the interest of the people of the city. And I was 15 on the day of the referendum. I couldn't even vote. And I was outside the polling station. We won, it was 55 45, and that was it. And we move on. And there's so many big issues and that we need to tackle, that we need to actually talk about and actually have constructive dialogue between all parties. And I'm not here to have a talking shop. It's not Holyrood. It's not Westminster. We're here to represent the people of Dundee. And I think people, especially Bailey Sawyers, should recognise that. And yeah, I've got nothing more to say about this. It's nothing to do with Dundee City Council. And I think he, along with his colleagues, know that. So that's all I've got to say on that.
Okay, thank you very much, Michael. We'll move on to the next motion in the order that I saw them come in. So Bailey Keenan? Can I just clarify? Sorry, Kevin, just before you start, I've seen the messages from Helen. Thank you, Helen. Am I correct in thinking that Dorothy, councillor McQ, you're seconding, yes? Perfect. Okay, Kevin, over to you.
Okay, thanks very much. I mean, I suppose the item coming up, you know, for independence looks like a desperation move writing to the Prime Minister, given that we've heard about whatever number in the last few months. Price-o-a-stamp, you know, haven't got really an issue on the council spending the price-o-a-stamp. But its content, don't do it manning, do it on your own. You've got a big enough group within the SNP, so if that's what you wish to do, then I wouldn't stop you spending the price-o-a-stamp to write to the Prime Minister. You know, I think there is much more important issues that need to be addressed for the citizens of Dundee at the moment. Hence the reason I put a motion relating to the Health Service. And I've been a secret shopper in the Health Service of late. And I think that the place is an absolute crisis. You know, A&E is vehicles sitting outside waiting to get into A&E and beds are being blocked, no getting in, it's health and social care. COSLA itself is calling on health and social care, changes to be put on hold until such times as the Scottish government get a grip of things. And, you know, clearly it's a more important issue for people at the moment when people are dying while they're waiting on care and waiting on treatment. And I hear, and I've had it said to me before about Dundee's got better A&E at times than anywhere else. It's only because they're gaming the figures and trying to make sure that people don't get in the direction of A&E by using NHS 24 to do it. And I've had a constituent who, I got an MP that managed to move forward his care because he couldn't get it to happen through NHS 24. You know, and if you come up with, it's all about Westminster, we don't have the money for the Health Service, then I could point out waste that is in the Health Service. So there is changes that could be made and it could be made within the budget that they've got. And they could make a real difference. Their eyes off the ball, the health minister's making a mess of it. And the Scottish government, you need to step in and do something about it. So it's about time we wrote to the First Minister and told her to step up and get on with the day job rather than looking for arguments and looking for spends when we ain't got the money for a referendum at this time. And of course, the John 28 has dished out the 20 million that he laid aside for a referendum. Probably would cover the cost of a referendum, but it was money that he laid aside to do it. He spent it. So let's just move on and get on with the day job and get things sorted. And I move this amendment because it makes more sense to me to be addressing the issues that face people in Dundee more so than an independence referendum. It's going to benefit them in any way at all at this time.
Councillor McQ?
Thank you. I'm pleased to support Bailey Keenan's amendment. We need to look no further than the press reports today from the Deputy Chair of the BME in Scotland, who warns that patients are dying as a result of pressures on the NHS. If any time is to be taken writing letters to national leaders, let's use that time addressing the real life-threatening issues facing our people. The last thing the people of Scotland need is another divisive referendum. And it seems the Scottish government agrees since the 20 million referendum fund has been transferred elsewhere. What they do need before anything else is a properly funded, functioning national health service and councillors getting on with the job they were elected here to do. I second the amendment.
Thanks very much, Dorothy. And then I'll come to Bailey Scott. Derek?
Sorry, thanks, convenor. It can't be a coincidence that the first debate in 2003 at the Scottish Parliament is independence and the first debate that the PNR Committee for 2003 is also independence. It's a coordinated approach and I expect there's going to be a lot more of that in the run-up to the general election. And I think people are fed up with the endless debate about independence. Far too much of Scottish government time is dedicated to constitutional matters. We regularly rush the business of the PNR Committee. Most nights we do that when we meet and we run out of time. And yet you're happy to agree to agenda items coming forward that the council has no responsibility for, as others have said. I'm not going to get into, respond to any of the points that be made by SNP members about the arguments as to why we should remain part of the United Kingdom, because the debate on Scottish independence is the wrong priority at the worst possible time. The SNP government is providing over disastrous NHS waiting times. There are appalling outcomes in education, social care, public transport, policing, and local governments being starved of cash, resulting in day-to-day services being cut. These issues should be Scottish government's priority during these difficult times, rather than, as Dorothy says, another divisive referendum. And at council level, we should be dedicating all our efforts into supporting our recovery from the pandemic. and helping households deal with the cost of living. And also trying to mitigate the cuts to local services that are going to happen next February as a result of the underfunding of local government by the SNP Scottish government. So my motion, convener, quite states what the position is with the UK government is that the Prime Minister has been clear that the UK government will continue to respect the result of that referendum fully from 2014. And so should the Scottish government. And I really don't think that the Prime Minister is going to change his mind on that because he gets a letter from you, convener. And the last thing that Scotland needs is the division and uncertainty another referendum would bring. Our focus really needs to be on supporting our recovery from the pandemic and all the day-to-day issues that matter to people that other councillors have said we really should be focusing on. So my motion resolves that we don't write to the Prime Minister about facilitating an independence referendum.
Okay, thank you, Bailey Scott. Can I ask, do you have a second there?
I don't know. Don't ask me. You'll need to ask the other members if there's one.
That was a prompt. I'm taking that as a no. Oh, sorry, councillor McHugh?
Sorry, my chat function is not working. I formally second Bailey Scott's motion amendment.
Thank you very much, councillor McHugh. Much appreciated.
Yeah, thank you. Right, I can see there's a number of comments to come in at this point. I think everything's been circulated. So councillor El Nakla?
Thank you. I'm just going to make a really brief comment. It's nice to see Labour and the Tories working together again. I'll just start off with that. I find it just really disrespectful because I think if people remember in 2014 Dundee voted yes. And we represent as elected members the people of Dundee. So for elected members to come on today and actually dismiss and be so disrespectful to the constituents of Dundee who are on the rise in support of independence, the figures are just going up. It's absolutely fine if you and your party's ethos do not agree with that. That's fine. And put forward your cases why. No problem. Your reason why you think the union's working. However, you're not doing that. You've just dismissed and laughed. You've laughed at the people in Dundee. And as a Dondonian, as an elected member, and just really shocked at the disrespect for the actual, the people of Dundee who did vote yes. And do see this as independence being normal. And the fact that it could resolve a lot of problems that we're seeing in this country. So I'll just leave it at that.
Thanks very much. Nadia, I'll come to Beale McPherson next.
Thanks, convener. I'll keep this extremely short. I agree with my group colleagues that we just view this as divisive. And we're quite disappointed that something that is not collegiate has been brought forward at this early time in the new year. We should be working together on our own responsibilities for the good of the people of Dundee. We actually agree with the Labour group's views on the NHS and the National Care Service. It's actually quite good to see the Labour group asking for the National Care Service to be paused. That's been my party's position consistently. But it hasn't been the Labour party's. We will actually, at a later stage in the committee, be calling for just that as part of our motion in relation to the finance settlement. And I think that's where it sits more appropriately. Because Labour's response to something that's about the constitution is to not talk about things that are about the constitution. So we will not be supporting the Labour group's amendment. We will be sticking with our own. Because we think we should just simply move the direct negative of what Bailey Sawyers has proposed. Given that it's divisive, given that we're disappointed, given that we do not think this is collegiate in terms of the running of the council. And we will simply vote for that committee makes notes the motion in the name of Bailey Sawyers, but agrees to take no action on the matter. Thank you, convener.
Yes, thanks, Beale McPherson. Helen, apologies. I thought you were referencing Dorothy, hence my confusion. So I'll bring you in at this point.
Okay, thank you, John. You're forgiven. Obviously, I'll be supporting Bailey Keenan's amendment. I think people are more concerned not only with their own health, but that of their friends and their families. And they're trying out for diagnosis, for treatment, for medication and for operations. I think I've had more complaints at my surgery in the last few months about the NHS than anything else. And to do only council stuff. And some people have lost faith in the health service, and it's all because the government will not make a commitment to invest the money needed to make the services better. And it's not the hospital staff, it's not the nurses, the doctors, surgeons, or anybody working on these services that are to blame. They are the workforce and they're working very hard. They're working extra hours. Some of them working their days off just to make sure that people are seen to and get what they need. I think they're just being let down by the government making the decision on where the money goes. We see older people, frail people, they're worried that it's their fault being blamed for bed blocking. Well, it's not. If we look back, and especially in Dundee's history, bed blocking is nothing new. It goes back 23 years when the NHS always had that problem of bed blocking. When we became an all-purpose authority, the government issued a white paper on putting social care services into health, hoping to solve the problem. But I must say that after a year, the council investigating and what people wanted through the deliberations, a working group looking at older people's services. We had the then Health Minister, Sam Galbraith, came to Dundee to look at what we were doing and how well it had worked. He was so impressed by what he, that he actually did a U-turn and kept the services within local government, which is where I believe they should be just now. And that was because it was what the older people wanted. It was about working in the community and it was cost effective. In 2016, the legislation was brought in and established a new integrated health, social care boards. They were never funded adequately, and they haven't been working. And obviously, some of the decision-making was wrong. And now the government went to establish a national care service for Scotland. And once again, they're running too fast without thinking it through, which is costing more money to set up. We seem to be investing and setting up services. And the cost, the money that should be in the health service has been used for new paper headings, new logos, everything like that. I think this is the biggest crisis that I've ever witnessed in my 42 years in local government. And I think we should be discussing about it. And I'm really concerned about the future. I think we should be asking for some of these services to come back into local government. Thank you.
Yes, thanks Helen. I'll come to councillor Short next, Lynne.
Thank you, convener. A lot of the words that I was going to use came out of councillor Nakla's mouth. But she didn't actually mention the fact that we are aggregate of 15, which I think broke the scales as it did nowhere else in Scotland. Likewise, our colleagues at the Scottish Parliament were the highest voted from all of the Scottish Parliament, and we have two MPs. Therefore, democratically, there does appear to be a big yellow umbrella over Dundee. And therefore, democratically, as a city council, if we feel, and it shouldn't be 15 of us, because it should be 29 of us, that this should be done, then this is what we should be doing because it's a democracy. And I might have this wonderful nirvana because I've been on this path since I was 10 years old in 1979. However, I genuinely believe that you would get your health service that's not been hatched off by the Tories if we have independence, because we will be able to focus on what we want. We won't have someone else making the decisions about this country if we get to our point where we're an independent, small nation that we, as in my group, believe that we should be. Thank you, convener.
Thanks very much, Lynne. Councillor Rome next.
Thank you, convener. I won't make a long point because, as my colleague alluded to, I'm quite keen to see democracy in action and get to the vote. I'm quite saddened and bemused by some of the comments that have been made by elected member colleagues tonight. And there's been some criticism of Bailey Sawyers' motion, and it's, as I say, it's quite saddening, but it's also amusing because it's so predictable. Indeed, he said several times in his speech exactly what was going to be said. Now is not the time. It's once in a generation. It was all trotted out by the speeches that came after him. And it's all quite sad and quite predictable, as he said. And we also had a bizarre argument that there's no money for it. Now, just need to look, I mean, the economic aspects of this are already addressed by councillor Tolland. But I mean, the improvements that could be made if we had independence are manifold. But yeah, it's, yeah, saddened and bemused. And then this idea that it's divisive. Well, we were all elected for different reasons, and this is one of the reasons we were elected for. So quite a bizarre argument to put forward that you should just not mention the thing that people most identify with your party. And lastly, we had this bizarre argument, oh, it's once in a generation, therefore you'll never get another vote. Now, there's no better example of the once in a generation argument being finished than councillor Creighton himself, who highlighted that he wasn't in fact old enough to take part in the last referendum, and now he is. He was disenfranchised and now could take part in the vote. So we'll have an example of someone who's an active member of politics, you know, who could take his part, however he votes, but it has not been able to do so in the lifetime since that last vote. So I just don't understand this argument at all. And it's frankly undemocratic to continue as we have, convener. And so for those reasons, I'll be looking forward to the motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to take Daniel as the last one. I was going to say that Charlie and Jax, but Heather and Daniel have got in there first. So I'll take the next four as the final contributions before letting Bailey Sawyers sum up on the original motion. So Charlie next.
Yeah, I hadn't intended to speak on this. I'm pretty agnostic about the whole thing. But when councillor Nakla said we were being disrespectful to the people of Dundee and we were laughing at the people of Dundee, I took offence at that. I was at his constituent's house on Friday, and that constituent has emphysema, COPD, arthritis of the spine. He moved into a council accommodation. It's covered in damp. The furniture had to be destroyed because of the spores that were there. And he had to go and get blood tests, emergency blood tests, to check to see whether the spores had entered his bloodstream. I do not think that's funny. And I do not think I'm being disrespectful by representing that person's interests. What we haven't heard from a single SNP councillor is any concern expressed about the things, the challenges that are facing the people of Dundee. And I think that's disrespectful, councillor Nakla. The people that are living in poverty, the people in the food banks, the people in their food larders, the lack of educational attainment, the collapse in our health service, none of that was mentioned. But what was mentioned was the referendum of 2014. So as I said, I'm agnostic about this whole thing. But I think it was disrespectful to accuse us, who are the people that go out and represent our communities on a daily basis, of accusing us of being disrespectful because of the referendum on Scottish independence. I just don't accept that. I don't recognise it. I think every single councillor in this chamber, and that includes all the SNP councillors as well, works really hard on a daily basis. I think we've spent too much time on this debate already. I hadn't intended to come in, but I have to address those words and councillor Rome's words about how he's bemused by the whole thing. Let's talk about the people of Dundee. Let's talk about the people of Lochie that are suffering on a daily basis. Let's talk about the thousand Scots people who were treated for hyperthermia by paramedics. Let's talk about that. Because these are the real issues that are facing people now. We aren't in a place like we were in 2014. We've been through a pandemic. We're going through a cost of living crisis. And all I'm saying is that we focus on what we can do to make people's lives better. And that is represent their interests in this chamber and represent their interests, working with council officers to try and ensure that we alleviate the many, many problems that Dondonians are facing.
Thanks. Jax, councillor Finnigan?
Oh yeah, sorry, I wasn't going to say anything either, but I just want to say something about focus. I think the focus about the 29 of us all being together should be the work of the council. The bigger things like referendum and things, we have voted for other people to do that, our MSPs and our MPs. We need to let them do that work. That is their focus. Tell us to focus on the work of Dundee City Council. Now, as you know, I work out of hours at King's Cross as a district nurse. People, I've worked 14 shifts over the last 16, worked all through Christmas, Christmas Day, Christmas Eve and the New Year. And people were waiting two hours to get through to NHS 24, three to four hours on a GP or nurse callback once they've been triaged by NHS 24, could be up to three hours for then an appointment at King's Cross or PRI, wherever they were told to go. All heightened by a media frenzy about strep and scarlet fever. So everybody was getting seen. This health service is actually on its knees. There was families nursing, the people that had end-of-life care from Roxburgh, they were home. We know packages of care because it was the last Christmas, they were home on pass. I think if they couldn't manage, they could go back into hospital. We should be focusing on the fact that these people have care. They have carers providing care, they have nurses going into care, they can access GPs or specialist reges when they can, as well as people living at home with routine, long-term conditions. And I just feel as though we're facing about an hour on this, and I'm angry about that regardless of what your opinion is on independence. You take, that's why we voted. And people voted for me, you know, because of my, whatever my preference was, or even what Labour was. They voted for me because they knew I would come here. And my inbox is full. We've got Dundee people want on their doorstep. Their independence, they will speak to their SNP or their Labour or whatever above the council. So please let us work together. Let us help those chief officers. These officers are getting a real hard time. They're trying to provide services on a shoestring. We should be all backing together to make sure that the money that we've got, regardless where it comes from, is well spent and efficiently spent where it's needed. That's all I've got to say.
Okay, thanks, Jax. I'll come on to councillor Anderson next. Heather?
Thank you. I wasn't going to speak on this either, but I just want to respond to a couple of points. The first point was from councillor Shears about the de facto referendum. I just wanted to stress that the SNP is absolutely clear that our preferred option for consulting people in Scotland about their future is a referendum and a section 30 order. So this is basically saying that we will carry on asking for a section 30 agreement to hold a referendum and will ask as many UK prime ministers as will have to suffer to do that. So we haven't abandoned that as the best route. We still think that is the best route. We're only where we are now because that route has been denied to us. And the second point was just to say, we share so many of the concerns about what people in Dundee are going through. That is the reason why we're passionate about independence, because we feel that we could do more to help people if we had the powers to run the country the way we want to run it and not just mitigate Tory austerity all the time. So the reason why we are pursuing independence is because we want to do better by the people in Dundee. And that's what they voted us in to do. And my third point is about mandates and democracy. It was a Welsh First Minister, Mark Drakeford, who said, and I'm going to quote, "If you have a government that is elected by its people with a proposition in its manifesto, it should have the right to implement that manifesto." "The Scottish National Party, much as I disagree with them on the issue, won the election on the basis that they should seek another referendum. How can that be denied?" This SNP group also had a proposition in the manifesto we were elected on, and that was that we would pursue independence at all costs. So that's why we're bringing it. We have a mandate and a democratic right to raise this in this arena. And that's why it's been discussed tonight. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Heather and councillor Coleman?
Thank you, Mr. Convener. Likewise, I wasn't actually going to speak on this discussion, but there was a a phrase I would point out that actually we had a lot of discussion about mandates and all the rest. Well, last year, despite winning a majority by the quirk of the electoral system, the administration actually won a minority of the votes in Dundee. So to say that we have a yellow umbrella across the whole city when a minority voted for the current administration, I do not think that one day Dundee belongs to one party. We are all elected by our constituents, and I do not think that one party can claim to represent the whole of the city. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. As I said, that's all the contributions I'm going to take. I haven't made my contribution yet, so I'll do that now. I think there's a number of points, but fundamentally, what is before us in terms of the original motion? is that democracy is an inalienable right. It isn't something to be bartered and it's not something to be denied. And there has been many contributions today and we accept that there is a broad spectrum of views on this subject, first and foremost. But this is about a process and it's very clear in the wording of the original motion that irrespective of the issue, there absolutely should be a democratic, fair, clear process for holding a referendum on any subject matter by any political party who might find themselves in government in Hollywood. And that is essentially at the heart of what's being proposed today. I think there's a number of contributions that have been made, which have indicated that this isn't an issue before or should be before Dundee City Council and I would rail against that as others have said. We've considered a whole host of issues which are international, national and local in context. And if they're important to the people of the city, then they are absolutely valid in terms of us debating any subject matter, whatever form that takes. And I think independence is certainly one that the people of the city have an expressed view on. Now, the reality is that unlike some parties, we did stand on a manifesto locally and I'm sure you've all read it from cover to back cover. But the final section of our manifesto, which we put before the people of the city and stood on an election promise of doing was to pursue, as others have said, a referendum on Scotland's independence. Now, if you would like a copy of that manifesto, I'm happy to provide you with one. I do have a few spare copies still in my office. But it's very clear that the manifesto commitment we stood on is one that we intend to implement and we intend to implement every single promise that we made to the electorate. That includes advocating and pursuing and promoting independence. Now, there have been a few bizarre suggestions, as I see it, which are around, I think it was put as not sharing concerns about the people of Dundee. Now, I would contest that. I think that's an absurd suggestion and I think those members that make that suggestion, I would hope certainly privately would agree it's absurd. Because it was the SNP in this administration that created the Fairness Commission. It was the SNP in this administration that created the Drug Commission. It was the SNP in this administration that provided additional funding for those areas. It was the SNP in this administration that led efforts in terms of cost of living and had two summits to rally organisations in the city and provide additional funding. And it was the SNP in this city in the last budget that provided additional funding to tackle some of those entrenched issues of poverty, deprivation and educational attainment. So I'll take no lectures from anybody on the priorities of the administration or the city. It's perfectly possible to take forward more than one issue at one time. Now, if some elected members are not capable of that, I can assure you that my team are more than capable to pursue our ambitions for a successful, prosperous Scotland and a prosperous Dundee and alleviating all the issues that were talked about today. We cannot ignore the fact that there is a need for a clear democratic process and that is essentially at the heart, I think, of Bailey Sawyer's motion today. So I will go to the summing up and then we'll go to the vote. Bailey Sawyer.
Convenor, thank you. I think you and colleagues have covered much of what I would have said in summing up. I mean, I would just reflect on one point that you touched on. You know, councillor Finnigan and councillor Malone spoke very passionately about problems that people in Dundee are facing at the minute. And we absolutely acknowledge that. There are huge problems in the city. But, you know, I think you've touched on it. We can work to try to deal with these problems at the same time as doing other things. And that's the crux of the matter. I've not actually heard any coherent argument as to why the people of Scotland should not have a say. I've heard criticism of the Scottish government, but that's not really the question. The question is why should people in Scotland not have a say over their own future? And nobody has answered that. So I'm a bit disappointed at that and perhaps not surprised. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Okay, we'll move to the vote. So Roger, can I come to you and perhaps we can just again double explain the process and then we'll go through that process.
Thank you, Convenor. Can I first please check, do you wish to take the amendments in the order in which they were moved, Convenor?
I think we'll go to your suggestion, which was the order in terms of the size of the group or the individual moving them. So we'll take them Willies against Kevins.
Thank you, Convenor. So the process then will be as follows. The administration's motion in the name of Bailey Sawyers, seconded by councillor Tolland, will be voted against the Labour motion in the name of councillor Keenan, seconded by councillor McHugh. The successful motion will then be voted against the Liberal Democrat amendment in the name of councillor Duncan, seconded by councillor Crichton. And the successful proposition will then be voted against the Conservative amendment moved by Bailey Scott and seconded by councillor McHugh. I would suggest that what we do, Convenor, is that at the end of each vote, I then indicate what the next vote will be.
Yeah, thank you very much, Roger.
So I'll pass over to Mr. Waddell. The motion is in the name of Bailey Sawyers, seconded by councillor Tolland and will be voted against the amendment in the name of Bailey Keenan, seconded by councillor McHugh. Mr. Waddell.
Thank you very much. Taking you to the vote now, Convenor.
Motion.
Councillor Alexander, sorry councillor Anderson.
Motion.
Lord Provost.
Motion.
Deputy Lord Provost Cardell.
Motion.
Bailey Dawson.
The motion.
Councillor Nakla.
Motion.
Councillor Flynn.
Motion.
Councillor Hunter.
Motion.
Councillor Lynn.
Motion.
Bailey Roberts.
Motion.
Councillor Rome.
Motion.
Bailey Sawyers.
Motion.
Councillor Short.
Motion.
Councillor Smith.
Motion.
Councillor Tolland.
Motion.
Bailey Keenan.
Amendment.
Councillor Cookshank.
Amendment.
Councillor Finnigan.
Amendment.
Councillor McHugh.
Amendment.
Councillor McIrvin.
Amendment.
Councillor Malone.
The amendment.
Councillor Scullen.
Amendment.
Councillor Shears.
The amendment.
Bailey Wright.
Amendment.
Bailey McPherson.
No vote.
Councillor Coleman.
No vote.
Councillor Crichton.
No vote.
Councillor Duncan.
No vote.
Bailey Scott.
Amendment.
That's 15 for the motion and 10 for the amendment. The motion is currently carried.
Thank you, Mr. Waddell. The motion in the name of Bailey Sawyers, seconded by councillor Tolland, is circulated. The amendment in the name of councillor Duncan, seconded by councillor Crichton, is also circulated. Mr. Waddell.
Going to the vote, Convenor.
Motion.
Councillor Anderson.
Motion.
Lord Provost.
Motion.
Deputy Lord Provost.
Motion.
Bailey Dawson.
The motion.
Councillor Nakla.
Motion.
Councillor Flynn.
Motion.
Councillor Hunter.
Motion.
Councillor Lynn.
Motion.
Bailey Roberts. Bailey Roberts.
Motion.
Thank you. Councillor Rome.
The motion.
Bailey Sawyers.
Motion.
Councillor Short.
Motion.
Councillor Smith.
Motion.
Councillor Tolland.
Motion.
Bailey Keenan.
No vote.
Councillor Cookshank.
No vote.
Councillor Finnigan.
No vote.
Councillor McHugh.
No vote.
Councillor McIrvin.
No vote.
Councillor Malone.
No vote.
Councillor Scullen.
No vote.
Councillor Shears.
No vote.
Bailey Wright.
No vote.
Bailey McPherson.
Amendment.
Councillor Coleman.
Amendment.
Councillor Crichton.
Amendment.
Councillor Duncan.
Amendment.
Bailey Scott.
No vote.
Thank you very much. That gives you 15 for the motion and four for the amendment. The motion is currently carried.
The motion in the name of Bailey Sawyers, seconded by councillor Tolland, is circulated. The amendment in the name of Bailey Scott, seconded by councillor McHugh, is also circulated. Mr. Waddell.
You think you're going to the vote, Convenor.
Motion.
Councillor Anderson.
Motion.
Lord Provost.
Motion.
Deputy Lord Provost.
Motion.
Bailey Dawson.
The motion.
Councillor Nakla.
Motion.
Councillor Flynn.
The motion.
Councillor Hunter.
Motion.
Councillor Lynn.
Motion.
Bailey Roberts. Bailey Roberts.
Sorry, I'm having a bother with my button. Motion.
Thank you. Councillor Rome.
The motion.
Bailey Sawyers.
Motion.
Councillor Short.
Motion.
Councillor Smith.
Motion.
Councillor Tolland.
Motion.
Bailey Keenan.
No vote.
Councillor Cookshank.
No vote.
Councillor Finnigan.
No vote.
Councillor McHugh.
Amendment.
Councillor McIrvin.
No vote.
Councillor Malone.
No vote.
Councillor Scullen.
No vote.
Councillor Shears.
No vote.
Bailey Wright.
No vote.
Bailey McPherson.
No vote.
Councillor Coleman.
No vote.
Councillor Crichton.
No vote.
Councillor Duncan.
No vote.
Bailey Scott.
Amendment.
You think you, that gives you 15 for the motion and two for the amendment. The motion is carried.
Thank you very much. At this point, can I suggest a short break to allow members to refill their coffee cups or have a quick toilet break? So we'll come back at 6:50. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, folks, that's 6:50 on the dot. So can I usher you all back? Thank you very much. Willie, you're the most important right now. So are you on the call?
Indeed, thanks very much.
Great, thank you. Okay, we'll move on with the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Item four then, before his capital expenditure monitoring report, this is for noting.
Yeah, standard update report, report, should I say. Any questions on this report? No? Okay, can I take this as agreed? Thank you very much. Willie.
Yeah, item five then, before his revenue monitoring report, you're asked to give your recommendations.
Again, standard update. I'm sure you've all read the report in detail, so I'll not give an introduction. I'll just welcome any questions. Councillor Crichton.
Is that me?
Yeah. Yeah, I thought last time you said you're the only councillor.
I didn't hear the last bit. It was actually on item four. I was a bit late to the party. But it was just on page 21, shows a huge reduction of most of the external insulation programme from 4.3 million to just 1.1. And whilst the slowdown of the EWI programme was understandable during the pandemic lockdown, and why is it such a large reduction for this year? I would have expected that some reduction, but not three quarters of it.
Okay, thanks very much for the question. I mean, we've agreed the report, but given the question is just in relation to some of the context within that, I'm happy to ask officers to provide an initial response. So Louise, do you want to come in on that point? Absolutely, sorry. Louise may not be on the call at this point because we've dealt with neighbourhood services. So Elaine.
Yeah, thank you, Convenor. Yeah, there has been significant delays because of the pandemic, but there's also been changes in terms of the specification for EWI. So we've been working through those changes and also changes in relation to the funding packages. So I'm pleased to say that that hard work has been done and we're confident that we can get these delayed programmes back up and running. And I hope to bring reports back to committee very shortly to resume some of the big projects that we're working through.
Thanks, Elaine. Thanks for that. Councillor Coleman, presumably I haven't jumped the gun with your question as well. Is this in relation to item five, which we're currently on?
No, sorry, it's item four, but if it's not.
Here's me thinking I gave ample time, but I'll get a little bit longer.
Fun problem with the vibe. Thank you, Becky. Paragraph 7.4 indicates the difficulty of achieving the value or timings of capital receipts for understandable reasons. 5.4.1 states projected capital receipts for this year have been reduced by over 2.4 million, but these are actually being added to the 2324 to attain a level of funding. Is that really realistic given the current financial environment? Will we not be back here in a few months reducing the 2324 expected total of capital receipts if we take this approach? I'm just trying to seek assurance from officers that the expectation of capital receipt levels for next year will actually be realistic and likely to be achieved.
I think it's fair to say that officers make judgements on the best information that's available at the time. So I think on that basis, I am certainly reassured as the convener that officers have taken on board the prevailing winds and also try to forecast what the future looks like, as anybody possibly can at this point in time. But I'll ask Robert just to come in and to offer some clarification. Robert.
Thanks, Convenor. So we certainly keep that under close review as we go through the year. And the timing of capital receipts can be difficult to project and we'll continue to keep you informed in terms of how that progresses. But there's no doubt that the market conditions have changed and we're seeing pressure in that. So we're doing what we can to generate those receipts and we'll certainly come back to you if there's any change in our estimates based on how things evolve.
Thanks very much, Robert. And Craig, can I just clarify again, is your question in relation to the capital? Item four or the revenue capital, revenue item five?
John, normal service has been resumed. It's item five I'm on about.
Thank you very much, Craig. Right, go proceed.
Okay, yeah, thanks. I appreciate, you know, the officers, you know, are not exactly querer voids. So I'm really just looking for their insight, you know, and the best guess, I suppose, with you. We, on page 28, we've got a shortfall in off-street car parking income of nearly a million pounds. I'm just wondering, can officers confirm that this is likely to be a long-term deduction? I'm thinking about the changes to work patterns since the pandemic. And if their best guess is yes, then will the budget volume for 202324 reflect this?
Thanks very much for the question. I know Robyn's on the call, so I'll maybe ask him to come in initially with a view on the kind of parking element of that. And then perhaps officers in finance will want to clarify the financial position, just to say, of course, not just changing working patterns, but the exorbitant price of petrol and diesel and cost of living generally are all having an impact on whether or not people bring their cars and vehicles into the city centre, which of course we don't want them to. If they can use public transport, we would always encourage that or use their legs. But Robyn, can I bring you in?
Chair, many thanks. At the moment, we estimate that about 85% of normal traffic volumes are coming into the car parks. Clearly changing working patterns is the biggest part of that. Now, we're aware that a number of major employers in the city have now started requiring staff to come in three days a week or two days a week, depending on the operational requirements. And we think that will deliver some increased business for the car parks. I think the convener's comment about encouraging the use of public transport is very important, but we need to recognise that Dundee is a regional centre and the people travelling from throughout the region for whom public transport is not realistically an option because it would require multiple changes of bus, for example. And so we think there will continue to be a gradual increase in occupancy of the car parks. But at this stage, it's really difficult to see where that trend will end. Will employers ultimately require all staff to come back in or is hybrid working going to mean 50% capacity, 25% capacity? Or whatever. So I think it requires further time for that to settle down. Will employers ultimately require all staff to come back in or is hybrid working going to mean fifty percent capacity, twenty-five percent capacity or whatever? So I think it requires further time for that to settle down, Chair.
Thanks very much for that clarification. And if it's any consolation, Robin, I provided seven pound of parking cost to your account today. So I see no further questions. So just to absolutely confirm, this is item five, revenue monitoring. No other questions on this? Can I take this as agreed? Okay, thank you very much. Willie?
Okay, takes you on to item six, local government finance settlement and financial implications for the city council. You'd ask to give the recommendations.
Clearly, this is a report that we'll all be very interested in in terms of the contents and also the impact upon our ability to deliver frontline services and it will not be lost on any members that have been very heavily engaged in conversations locally, nationally and via COSLA on the budget for local government and particularly with a keen eye on what that means for Dundee in practice. The report before us obviously provides a lot of context and detail. It's fairly thorough. And I want to thank officers who have worked over the festive period in trawling through various forms of information, Excel spreadsheets and documents that would make your eyes water in order to identify and understand what that means for practice in Dundee. I would reiterate the point I've made several times, which is that there is ongoing engagement and clearly through COSLA as the umbrella body. We are continuing to explore that discussion with Scottish Government. And likewise, I've written to Scottish Government to convey my aspirations for the city of Dundee and also what we would hope to see. And I'm very mindful of the fact that there are significant challenges for all public sector services, no matter whether they are national or local. And the prevailing winds are extremely challenging. There's no easy answers. You take money from one area to put it into one another area, then it means that that presents a new set of challenges. So I don't think there are any easy answers. But again, for what it's worth, I'm very heavily engaged in that agenda and working with colleagues across Scotland to continue to pursue the best possible budget settlement for Dundee and for the issues that we want to address in the city. So with that said, I will come to I'll come to questions first, Fraser, if that's all right. You've got a question, so I'll come to you first.
I do indeed, convener, and as you know, I do have an amendment, but obviously I'm aware that Bailey Keenan has a question as well. And obviously I'll come to that later. The question's in relation to what's the information at three point one oh. I should first of all say perhaps that I completely concord with your view about the hard work officers are putting over the festive season to actually get to this stage because it's all about lastminute.com. And it's, you know, it's a knock-on effect, isn't it? It's when the UK government can tell the Scottish government, can tell local authorities. And I remember back, if I go back twenty years, we would have the budget volume in our hand at this point in time. In fact, we probably would have got it just before Christmas. And I think it's a, an indication as to the turbulent times that we're in, that we're not at that stage at this point. But I'm grateful to officers and I think we all recognise the hard work that's been put on, put in rather. My question's about at three point, three point ten, three point one oh. It indicates assuming a three percent council tax increase savings of twelve and a half million would still have to be found. In relation to that, will such proposed savings be included or will not be included in the figures that appear in the budget volume when it is issued? I would just really like some clarity on that so it's quite clear to elected members when they get the budget volume if such assumptions that are made in this paper have flown through to the budget volume.
Okay, thanks for the question. I'll come to Robert in the first instance. Robert?
Thank you, convener. So the budget volume will set out our assumptions in relation to the costs of services for next year, but not where there are political decisions to be made about choices that are in front of the council. So it will include, for example, in this report, our estimate of what we think loan charges will be for next year and the provision for pay, et cetera. But it won't include anything which will require a decision of the council to be made in the deliberations. And we will obviously engage with members following the production of the budget volume around options that are available to the council to beat that budget gap.
Okay, can I, can I just be quite clear then, just so we're crystal clear on this, Robert? That means that, you know, assumptions about council tax rates set would not be included. So not the point at three point one oh. But it would include what's in the three point nine, which talks about inflationary pressures. Am I correct in saying that?
That's correct. Yeah, apologies, convener.
Oh, I'm back.
No, sorry, I was, I was speaking. I was just waiting for you. If you're happy to be to come in on that.
Sorry, yes, I lost my signal there. So I was frivolously trying to get my other device on. Carry on, Robert.
Apologies. So, yes, Bailey McPherson, we will include in it the assumptions of what we think the actual costs of delivering services are. There's a planning assumption of a three percent council tax increase, but no decision is made on that, and that'll be a matter for the council itself to determine. But we will make that clear in the budget volume, the assumptions that we have made. And it will be, as I've said, for yourselves to consider what budget proposals to bring forward to help close that gap.
That's appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much. Kevin, come to you next.
I suppose in making a comment, obviously, when the deputy first minister come out and said what a marvelous budget he was giving to local government, it certainly hasn't come through to Dundee in any way at all. Certainly, we're not very much better off than we were. I think he was painting the picture. He was half a billion pound more going in the direction of local government, but the ability appears to be seventy-one across local government. And, you know, the results for us are not any much better than the assumptions officers had to make before. I suppose the couple of comments is that in these assumptions of laying aside money and laying aside other reserves, I take it that when it comes to budget setting, there is a room for manoeuvre as to whether that is three point eight laid aside or it's less given the volume of cuts that we're likely to make. And another one that I was really disappointed in was the amount of money that's laid aside for allocated to local flooding and wondering how officers are getting on making other representations to the Scottish government, given that it appears that there's only four thousand pound coming in the direction of Brody Ferry. And yet we cut a few million pound out of budget just recently with, you know, other work that was going to go on with the Scottish government to try to deliver something. But we stand the chance of the airport flooding and we want to spend nine million pound or a city's deal on that. And we're obviously seeing just along the road where the immediate site at Riverside is now closed on a regular basis based on flooding. So that's a real disappointment for Dundee that the Scottish government don't recognise the issues that we face.
Sounds like more of a comment than a question.
The question was around, the question was around what are officers doing about lobbying to increase that flooding money? And obviously, indeed, is the three point eight room for negotiations with the officers around budget setting?
Yeah, I'll come.
Seeing it's an assumption they're making.
Yeah, I'll come to Robert on the latter point and then perhaps bring in Robin, see if he can answer on the flooding specific question. Robert?
Thank you, convener. So the three point eight is our best estimate of what we think we can set aside for inflation at this stage and effectively retains the funding that we brought into this year going forward. So it means we've used resources in the current year and we're still in a position to set that aside to help, help, help next year's budget. We're certainly, as officers of the view, that we need to strive towards a balanced budget and making sure that going forward, we're in a sustainable position that will for the council to decide ultimately how it wants to assemble its budget proposals that will bridge that gap that are in front of us there. And obviously, we'd be happy as officers to talk to anyone about how they might wish to put their proposals together. Convener? I don't know if you want me to mention flooding?
If you've got the answer, I'm sure Robin won't mind you answering.
So, so, so the funding for Brody Ferry is the tail end of the funding for the scheme. What I'm aware of is that there is a sum of money available for flooding in Scotland. We have been putting our proposals forward for it, but the schemes by and large have proved more expensive than they, than was anticipated. And that money hasn't gone as far as it might have done in terms of the number of schemes that it has, has delivered. So we're certainly have been involved in discussions. And I know Robin's team have been making submissions around projects that could come forward, but there isn't sufficient funding available at the present time to do all the schemes that ourselves and the Scottish government would wish to do. I don't think they don't recognise the schemes. I just think there isn't sufficient funding available.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anything you'd like to add, Robin?
Chair, I just think to update members, there hasn't been any further change in the national position. Officers are continuing to engage both through COSLA and with CPD Direct around the cycle two funding for flood prevention. But there hasn't been any further movement since the last committee report that members approved.
Yeah, thanks for that. Right, there's another question. So I'll come back to you, Bailey McPherson, for your amendment. And I'm sure you'll be happy for that to be circulated.
Yeah, that would be great if officers could circulate it. And I should say that the purpose in our amendment, we've tried to be collegiate in the way that we've written it. In fact, so collegiate in the way that we've written it, that it's almost word for word. The motion, changing the title of the authority, but it's almost word for word, the motion that was approved at Perth and Conroth Council. I've been speaking with my colleagues in Perth and Conroth because I'm aware that they had a similar discussion on this recently. And I think it's important that local authorities act together on the issues of local government funding and the settlement because the settlement is really of deep concern. And I should say that an almost identical motion was supported by both the SNP and Liberal Democrat groups on Perth and Conroth Council. And with that in mind, we've tried to write it in that spirit so that we hopefully try to get the support across the parties on the council. I think everybody would agree, and I think actually Bailey Keenan alluded to it, that the spin about five hundred and fifty million additional funding actually in reality, when you take, when you take committed funding, existing commitments rather, is as Bailey Keenan correctly alluded to, only seventy-one million. And it's a deeply concerning situation that here we are with such a frankly derisory settlement for not just Dundee but for local authorities generally. You, convener, alluded to the fact that you've already been in touch with Scottish government. And in fact, some of the actions that we are asking for, which are really three in number in reality, are that you lobby the first minister in relation to the effect of the the settlement on council funding and that we asked the chief executive to write to the president of COSLA, councillor Shona Morrison, asking that the deputy first minister meet with COSLA leaders to hear concerns firsthand on this issue. And also the chief executive writes to the first minister on behalf of the whole council and calling for a pause to the structural change of the National Care Service. This again was collegiately agreed by both your group and mine in Perth and Conroth. And I noticed that Labour Group in their earlier motion on the constitutional matter mentioned pausing the National Care Service. So we hope this will have a degree of cross-party support. Whatever your view, our view is, and it's different than yours, convener, because I know your party proposed the National Care Service in its manifesto for the Scottish Parliament in two thousand and twenty-one. We did not. But what I think we can all agree on is that the costs which are into the billions, you know, you're talking one plus billion in terms of the setup costs. Given the challenges facing social care and preventative services generally in local government, we feel strongly that there should be a pause in the National Care Service structural change at this point. We wouldn't, we would argue that we shouldn't revisit it. You might argue differently, but the amendment is silent on that particular issue. The point is that the amendment simply talks about a pause. So we're hoping that these actions appear reasonable. We're hoping that all members of the council recognise that we're in a very challenging funding situation and that what we're essentially alluding to is that Scottish government really has to engage fully with COSLA on behalf of local government in relation to this because it's a matter of the deepest concern. So with that, I'll obviously pass across to councillor Duncan, who's obviously going to second me. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Councillor Duncan, over to you.
Thanks, convener. Yeah, I'm not going to rehearse anything Billy McPherson's just outlined. I think it brings me back to like airware talk this evening about trying to be collegiate, you know, it's a new year, it's very early in the new year. I think this offers us all the opportunity, I hope, to speak as one voice. My, I mean, these are tremendously challenging times for all of us. Every single one of us, you know, all twenty-nine of us want to do the very best that we can. We appreciate that there's not all the money in the world. My, my particular concern would be with regards to the National Care Service. I'm not saying never, never, ever, because I know that there are people on this council who think otherwise. But I think faced with all these multiple challenges, the great uncertainty that's coming down the line is maybe just an opportunity to maybe not be doing anything quite so radical and dare I say costly right now. And so on that basis, as I say, I'm not shooting down the idea forever. We've all got our own party positions on it. But I think at the moment, it might be wise, shall we say, to, you know, maybe pause such an epic change. And so, and therefore perhaps produce more much-needed finance for local government, both here in Dundee and throughout Scotland. So on that basis, I'm happy to second this.
Thanks very much, councillor Duncan. There's much which we agree with, I'm sure, and some issues, as you've alluded to, that we perhaps disagree with. Just in the, I suppose, vein of seeking a consensus, if members will indulge me, I'm going to suggest a five-minute recess so that we have time to discuss this. It's obviously a substantive amendment as well. And I think that's probably the most sensible approach, rather than trying to have a discussion without having fully discussed it as a group. So can I suggest that we take out, sorry, take, let's say, the next seven minutes, so twenty passed, in order to have those discussions, then we'll reconvene at that point in time. Apologies, colleagues, that was slightly longer, partly due to my signal, which keeps dropping, which is quite unfortunate. So hopefully it does not repeat. I think we are all back on the call. So thank you very much for allowing us, I suppose, the opportunity to have that discussion. I think it was helpful. To seek some consensus, I suppose, this, and again, it was alluded to that there will be some a wide array of views, particularly on some elements contained within the motion, but to seek some degree of cross-party consensus, I do have a suggestion or two. So let me just pull up the motion as it is. So really, in terms of the second section of the amendment, which starts committee therefore agrees and lists four. And some of that, of course, as has been alluded to, has already been undertaken, but nonetheless happy to keep it in. On section four, Bailey McPherson, would you be happy to include in there essentially that the chief executive should write to the first minister for Scotland, Nicola Sturgeon, MSP, on behalf of the council, calling on the Scottish government to consider pausing the current plans for structural change required to set up the current care service and end the sentence there. Because I think there's a difficulty in terms of understanding what that means in practice and not wanting to preempt that conversation, but allowing COSLA to engage more fully in that. And that way we can reach a consensus on this issue.
I have absolutely no problem with that whatsoever. So we're happy that we go forward on that basis.
Okay, so on that basis, if there are no alternative amendments with the agreement of Bailey McPherson to the amendment, can I take this item as agreed? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on. Willie?
Okay, thank you very much. Takes you on to item seven, local nature reserve boundary, Riverside Nature Park. You'd ask to give the recommendations.
Okay, hopefully self-explanatory in terms of the detail that's contained within the report. Any questions on this? Michael, councillor Creighton?
I'm here, quick, convener. I hope I've got on with the item. But yeah, my question is a quick one. Could I ask officers if there's any disadvantages in de-declaring the inner T estuary local nature reserve insofar as it covers Dundee? Will a new local nature reserve being declared retain any protections that are in existing inner T estuary local natural reserve has?
Thanks very much, Michael. I'll come to Tony. Thanks, convener. Tony, I thought you were in a darkened room there.
I had to shut her up and I forgot to put a slide out, convener. Thanks for reminding me. I can advise the councillor that the actual fact it offers a greater protection because it allows us to give the status of local nature reserve to Riverside Nature Park for the first time. And there's also greater protection. And there's also greater protections for the wider T S G anyway that supersede what was the one that's been de declared. So hopefully that provides some reassurance, convenor.
Thanks for that clarification. Okay, I see no further questions on this item, so can I take this as agreed? Thank you very much. Willie?
Thanks for meeting employees, the future of Flower and Food Festival. You'd ask you the recommendations.
I should probably start this item by saying I'm arguably one of the biggest supporters of the Flower and Food Festival. Not just in a professional capacity, obviously, as a previous convenor of neighbourhood services, I was very much involved in the overall strategy for delivering that, but also as a customer, because I think it's a fantastic event. The last few years have been particularly challenging, given large-scale events have not been possible. And of course, we're also facing a significant array of challenges, not least the financial challenges, which we've just touched upon as well. But I think I speak on behalf of certainly the entire administration, if not the council, when I say that we still have an aspiration to continue, to see a continued event of some significant scale. Please excuse me for a moment, because my dog seems to be causing some chaos giving ones. Working from home, it's perhaps. And I think it's clear to say that in terms of the Flower and Food Festival, where it originated and where it currently stands are very different, because the event itself has adapted over time. And again, I'm very hopeful that it will continue to adapt and thrive long into the future. And we've seen with events focused on different aspects of the green agenda by diversity, flowers, food, et cetera, how we can host such successful events. And I'm very mindful of the activities that took place in the aftermath or during it, I suppose, the COP26 event being hosted in Glasgow, where Dundee had a significant array of activities taking place with the crescendo being the large storm puppet that traversed the city centre. And there was a whole host of other activities as well. So I think we've got some clear aspirations there about what we could do. And now is the time to make sure that we can take forward an approach that delivers an event of scale that is of benefit to the city, the city's businesses and the citizens of Dundee, but also recognises the significant challenges we've got. And that's what this report sets out today. And I would endorse the recommendation, but I can see I have a couple of questions and an amendment. So I'll take the questions first, Daniel. So if you can leave your amendment for the moment and come to your question.
Thank you, Mr. Convenor. Our group asked for attendance figures for the three years previous to what are outlined in the report. And although not all that information was available, it's clear to me anyway that attendance was fairly similar in older years. Indeed, in 2016, there was an attendance figure of 17,722. And attendance actually grew in 2017 and 2018. Would officers accept that it is not indeed the case, that there's a gradual decline in attendance, but a recurring attendance of around 16,000 to 19,000? In other words, this is not an event in decline in popularity?
I don't think there has been a particular suggestion around the popularity of the event, other than the challenges that we face in terms of delivering it. But Tony, do you want to come in, offer a view?
Thanks, convenor. And thanks, councillor, for your question. Yeah, we did provide some additional information at the behest of Bailey McPherson, which does confirm the figures that we know about in terms of 2016 and 15. We weren't able to provide, go as far back as 2014. I think the main issue is around, there's certainly validity in what the council was advising and that the attendance does fluctuate. One should also remember though, in more recent years, that we introduced the Friday buses for the kids, the school kids to come, which probably enhanced the attendance figures latterly. But I think probably the main thrust of the report talks about the increase in expenditure and the ability to run it, as well as the resources required, convenor, to support the event as it is in its current format.
Yeah, thanks, Tony. Next question I have is from Bailey McPherson, Fraser.
Thanks. I have a couple of questions, because I take issue with a couple of the comments that are in the report. I'm quite disappointed by the report, if I'm being perfectly honest. But my question, first of all, my first question's wronged the comment in 4.2, that this is the last remaining local authority floral show, teeth and phaser, floral show in the UK. Is that actually accurate? I don't think that is. My understanding is that, for example, Chorley Council is still running the Chorley Flower Show, which is a pretty well-known event. Antrim and Navie Borough Council of Northern Ireland is still running their flower show. Falmouth Town Council runs there. So that's just three examples. I'm just really wondering where this information came from, because I think it's not the case. That I fully accept there are some flower shows that are run by, for example, charitable bodies with support from local authorities around the country. But in terms of direct ones, Chorley is the best example, actually. Chorley Council runs the Chorley Flower Show, as far as I'm aware. And I just think the comment in the report that it's the last UK floral show is just simply inaccurate, but perhaps officers could comment on that.
Okay, I'll turn to Tony.
Okay, thanks, convenor. Thanks, Bailey McPherson. This was a question that I had asked my officers to look at in terms of the accuracy of that statement. We weren't able to find any event that was run along the lines of what we're doing in Dundee in terms of flower and food festival. I think maybe what's missing from that sentence is floral and food specific event. And, you know, Bailey McPherson, I've got no doubts is completely correct in what you're saying. There may be two or three other events, but we weren't able to find any at the time we composed the report. So I'm happy to accept what Bailey McPherson is saying, but it was done with the best intentions in terms of accuracy, convenor.
Yeah, thanks for that, Mr. Boyle. And I don't doubt best intentions. The reality though is it's not the last local authority-run floral show in the UK. And I'm grateful to Mr. Boyle for his feedback on that. My other point is also in 4.2, because it talks about the largely unchanged in 20 years. Now, I just don't accept it's largely unchanged in 20 years. In fact, you said adapted over time, convenor. And I think that's a far more accurate, you know, spin on it, if you like, than that it's been largely unchanged in 20 years. I mean, I've attended the vast majority of them, certainly in the time I've been on the council. I attended a few prior to that. I've attended both as an attendee, but also I've helped to staff Dundee Fairtrade Forum stand in, you know, in the past as well. And I recall in 2019, we had the You and Children's Marquise Initiative, sponsored by Nature Scotland, formerly Scottish Natural Heritage, on the theme of climate change and sustainability. Now, I would say that was a very good new initiative in terms of highlighting climate change and sustainability. And the food festival, sponsored by Zero Waste Scotland, has specifically in recent years highlighted food waste. Again, something maybe we weren't doing throughout the 30-plus festivals that have been run since 1992 at Camperdown. We've had the World Jam Championship. In 2018, I recall the festival hosted the cultural expo in Camperdown. House is part of the festival, highlighting the city at its cultural best. So I just feel the spinningness, that it's been largely unchanged, I just don't think is accurate. And again, I would be grateful for comments on that, because I just feel it paints a picture of decline, last remaining, static in what it does, which actually just isn't how I see the festival as having been in the past few years.
Thanks, Fraser. I'll bring Tony in again, just to say, I think, slightly in defence, I suppose, of the report, I think it's talking about the substantive focus and the approach to delivery, rather than individual elements within that overall envelope, if that makes sense. Because yes, I've absolutely acknowledged what you said, and the cultural element was something that one of my former colleagues, Anne, was very passionate about in pulling together. But I think the overall Flower and Food Festival has remained fairly not standard, that's the wrong word, but fairly consistent, I suppose. When I was talking about adaptive, I suppose I was also referencing its long history, going all the way back to when the flower event was hosted at Magdalen Green. And I just pulled up some photos recently, 1909, I think. There's a long history there again. And then the food element was added significantly later. But Tony, I'll let you speak for yourself, rather than trying to do it for you.
Thanks, convenor. I take on board completely the point that you've made and Bailey McPherson. I think in terms of the context of that comment at 4.2, it does focus on the point that you make, convenor, about it in its most recent incarnation, it being at Camperdown Park. It's largely a marquee-led event with a whole range of things. And probably the biggest innovation over the last 20 years was the food element that was brought in before Mark, convenor, Rendall. But as you quite rightly say, Magdalen Green hosted the event for years in a previous version, as did in fact in back hundreds of years to Fairbairn. Fairbairn was actually where the markets took place, the annual market took place in Dundee. I think the overall context was written with integrity and with a genuineness, convenor. And of course, it changes in various aspects, and it has, as Bailey McPherson has alluded to.
Thanks very much for that. I can see George has got comments, so councillor Cookshank, come to you next.
Thank you very much, convenor. If I can just recap, fireworks cancelled, Christmas light night crossed off the calendar, Easter fun day gone. The Flower and Food Festival is one of the last remaining highlights of the public events calendar. So it's more important than ever that it be saved in some shape or form. As a council, we know the importance of getting people out and about and facilitating events which bring the community together for some fun and recreation. The Flower and Food Festival embodies that idea, so I'm pleased to see that the council has not thrown out the baby with the bathwater. I appreciate the tough reality that costs are up, footfall is down, and not everything can stay the same. But I'm sure with a bit of creativity, the Flower and Food Festival can be reinvented and saved for the modern era. Clearly, canceling this event altogether is the least desirable option. And continuing with a virtual show would defeat the purpose, as it's about smelling the flowers and tasting the food, et cetera. And it's a worldly sensory experience which people want to enjoy together. I therefore welcome the council's commitment to go away and review and how we can make this popular event fit for the future. However, I would insist on further clarification of how and when plans will be developed, costed and shared for the council's consideration. It's important that it isn't kicked into the long grass like Bonfire Night. And it's crucial that we don't let time slip to such an extent that 2024 isn't deliverable either. Can officers please outline the process more fully in a future update? Thank you.
Thanks, George. I'll bring Tony in just a second, just to respond to a couple of points you made there. Firstly, I don't recall Labour amendments to say for increased funding for some of the things that you've mentioned. Some of them, not all of them. So I think it's a little bit rich to pontificate on something that you didn't necessarily defend or bolster yourself. But also say that what's very clear from this administration is that we've increased the capacity for the delivery of events. Now, if you remember, in last year's budget, there was an additional allocation of funding to support activities, £60,000. There was an increased allocation of funding to support marketing of events and activities within the city. There was an increased allocation of funding to support the activities of things like the Climate Leadership Group and the delivery of projects such as those associated with COP26. So we've invested very heavily, and there's a few things he didn't mention. So they expanded and enhanced Christmas activities over a considerable period of time, including St Andrews Day's events. There's the Summer Streets Festival, which reached the crescendo with the Beano sign being erected on the law, and a whole host of other things, including support for events like the Kanzing Karate International Championships, which will take place in just a few months' time. And previously, of course, the announcement that Dundee was supporting and helping host BBC Big Weekend. So more than anything, I think we've consistently been trying to leverage in not only resources but expertise to bring more to the city, despite the challenging backdrop. So that was just some initial response on that, and I will bring in Tony to address your substantive point. Tony?
Thanks, convenor. And thanks councillor Cookshank. Yeah, I mean, if we look at the recommendations, they're both 2.1 and 2.2, convenor. It's clear that the report talks about the city development taking the lead on this as it goes forward. And they're looking at specific, they're looking at several things. One is how they can potentially develop this event for 2024. And they're going to look at that as part of a kind of wider review of the events, which is mentioned at 2.2. And it does say that will clearly define the budget scope in particulars of the revised event, convenor.
Thanks, Tony. And I should have said, certainly endorsing and support what you were saying, Georgia, in terms of modernising and safeguarding an event of some nature going forward as well, because I think that's absolutely imperative for the city and for all of us as well. And that's why the motion, or sorry, the recommendations in the report as they are. I see no other questions or comments, so I'll come back to Fraser. Sorry, no, I won't. I tell a lie. I'll come back to Daniel to move your amendment. And if I can ask officers to circulate that via email, please.
Thank you, Mr. Convenor. And is it now circulated? Right, it's circulated. Thank you for that. My amendment this evening seeks to instruct officers to continue to look at ways of ensuring the traditional format of the festival remains viable. It appeared to me that this is yet another example of where we can ditch or reduce an event for the people of Dundee, rather, and then we will take that chance. Another first-class popular event lost in Dundee and which will possibly be replaced by a slimmed-down alternative. Now, I'm not obtuse. I understand budgetary pressures exist as much as any of the other 28 councils on this council. But for me, it is important that we look at all possible avenues of making the current format viable. There's more than a financial aspect to this. Such events provide the ability for groups to advertise and grow further, which has a long-term positive financial impact for our local and regional economies. Indeed, after the lockdowns and restrictions that we all had to endure, we should now appreciate outdoor mass events, mass events than ever before, and just how actually good they are for our mental health. Solutions to help mitigate the cost can be looking at the possibility of additional sponsorship for the event and possibly partnering with neighbouring authorities. Why can we not have a regional event based in Dundee? Have we considered approaching the other T side authorities who have significant rural areas and would think have real interest in this? These avenues provide possibilities to keep the traditional format viable and make use of Camperdown Park. Moreover, there is still much visitor and exhibitor interest in attending real flower and food shows. This can be evidenced by the successful gardening event held at School Palace in early June 2022. The event was well-attended by visitors and gardening groups, many who exhibit in Dundee. I therefore question, when it says in the report, there's a general consensus that the current format should change, where is this evidenced? I can see no evidence of a consultation with those who actually attend and use the event, saying that these feel it should change. I think what it really means is there's a consensus amongst others that it would make life somewhat easier not to run the event like this. And for me, a clear lack of ambition from the administration. Officers have said there's no local authority flower shows in the UK left. Clearly some doubt about the accuracy of that, we discussed that earlier. But for me, it's entirely irrelevant what other authorities do in any case. We are here to serve the people of Dundee and not make decisions based about what is happening anywhere else. Dundee is a city of gardeners and biodiversity, providing food for ourselves and pollinators we hope to attract. We should be celebrating this by providing a proper event, as we have done for years, and not a slimmed-down version. I've already covered the selective use of attendance statistics earlier, but the report does at 4.2 claim a reduced interest in attendance by the public. But I think we use the fair range of figures, we do see a sustained attendance. Lastly, for me, this is another example of the fixation of holding events at the waterfront and not north of the King's Way. Dundee exists outside the waterfront. I am not anti-waterfront development, it's fantastic, but it cannot be to the detriment of the rest of the city. A sentiment echoed by me, by many constituents on a frequent basis. I do find it obvious, convenor, that we should try and remove events from the ward we represent. Camperdown has already lost its 18-year-old golf course, and its replacement seems to be delayed every term. I think not making use of our green spaces, fantastic green spaces like Camperdown Park, is a mistake. Let's not leave the rest of the city behind by, in my opinion, making yet another, what is in my view, a short-sighted decision. We absolutely should not be throwing away the successful and longstanding event at Camperdown without looking more fully about how we can keep it as it is, grow it and make it financially sustainable. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll come straight to councillor Duncan to second.
Yeah, thanks, convenor. I think councillor Coleman's outlined the case fairly well, so I'm not going to put along this too much. But I think that, you know, Camperdown, I remember when I was a wee boy, and that was scarcely yesterday, unfortunately. But, you know, there's been events like this in Camperdown Park for many a year. And frankly, there's nothing beats an actual on-site event. I mean, we know why it had to go virtual for the And frankly, there's nothing beats an actual on-site event. I mean, we know why it had to go virtual for a while, but I think the attraction, I mean, I've had complaints already since this news broke to me, saying is there not something that can be done to preserve or indeed reinvigorate this much-loved festival? So I think Daniel's put it out very well, and I would simply make the case that the council needs to see this very much as an asset and an opportunity to make things work in Dundee. We've got nice new hotels, cafes, restaurants, pubs, et cetera. They all need patrons, but that means that Dundee has to give people out with Dundee, not just residents in Dundee, a reason to actually come here, stay here, spend their money, reinvigorate the local economy. And as Daniel correctly says, you know, let's see some of that spend going north of the Kingsway. So on that basis, I'm happy to second this.
Thanks very much. Craig, I'll come to Fraser's comments, and then I'll offer mine and then come to conclusion. Fraser?
Thanks, Convenor. And I'll be very brief, but I think, and councillor Coleman very much highlighted our concerns regarding this. But the move away from Camperdown, I think, would be highly detrimental, as has been alluded to. And with nothing against the development at the waterfront, but we just feel taking this away from Camperdown, where it has run so successfully over such a long period of time, is a seriously sad thing to actually consider. And it's interesting, we've had, our group, because we'd made our sort of position pretty public, we've had contact from as varied groups, as volunteers from the Bumblebee Conservation Trust, from the president of the Royal Caledonian Horticultural Society, contact us and say, we want to see the traditional event that's been run so successfully continue. And that's why we feel, and I think we would feel less strongly if, to be blunt about it, the paper wasn't so absolutely thin on what the alternative will actually look like. And I think that's a real concern. I would also add as well, 2023 has been completely lost in this. I contacted the department back in June of last year, asking for a briefing with elected members to discuss in an informal manner the future of the Flower and Food Festival, because we'd all had wind of the fact that, well, it had already run a couple of virtual ones and there was no sign of it happening anytime soon. And that was agreed to at the time. And the briefing didn't actually happen until November. And in that intervening time, time was lost, frankly. Nothing in 2023. And if I'm being honest, what this paper says is frankly, move it to the waterfront. It doesn't really say dreadfully much else, other than the fact it's quite clearly going to be a smaller and not the same type of event that has been run so successfully at Camperdown over such a long time. Councillor Coleman mentioned a couple of things that I think are important, that we should be considering partnering arrangements with our neighbours and also looking at additional means of sponsorship as well. We all get the financial challenges. I'm just going to leave with a comment from somebody who's not a politician, but is somebody who I think we all have a fair degree of respect for, and that's Andrew Batchelor, the founder of Dundee Culture. He's a very impressive young man, I'm sure we would all agree. And he's done so much to positively promote the city in the past few years. And I'll just quote him word for word and leave it at that. The Flower and Food Festival should not be axed, and I would hate to see, that would be a ridiculous decision to slim it down, the event. The event, the festival, has been part of our culture for decades. And to get rid of such a tremendous traditional event would be a real loss. Well, I agree with that. And I'm not reassured by the report in terms of what would come out the other side in relation to a slimmed-down event at the waterfront. So for that reason, I'll be supporting councillor Coleman. Thanks, Convenor.
Thanks very much, Fraser. I did say that I'd offer my comments and then we'd go to the vote, but I'm going to be generous. So I'll bring in Kevin at this point, and then I'll offer my comment, and then we'll go to the vote.
Convenor, I suppose I was trying to get to the stage where you wouldn't go to a vote, because, you know, I think there's merit in what Fraser and his colleagues are saying in relation to an event north of the Kingsway. You know, whilst we're in agreement that, you know, there is a potential for modernising and even within some of the comments that Fraser made earlier, we have viewed ideas of things that have happened in the past that might well be drift back into an event that could make it worthwhile. But, you know, perhaps parking this particular issue at the meantime, until the paper has developed up that but further, might well alleviate the problem. As Bailey MacPherson says, the paper's a bit slim on, you know, let's just do it in at the moment and move on. We are winging a prayer that we're going to bring back something equally as good or otherwise. So, you know, I think we do need to consider things north of the Kingsway. So, you know, if we're not going to park it, then the chances are I'm looking to support the Lib Dems motion.
Okay, thanks for that. I'm going to come back on a couple of points. So I think first and foremost, it's important to say from what I've heard and what I know from my own group, that there's a consensus that there is a real ambition to see a continued event that has a focus on sustainability, food, and looking at all those various elements. And it's looking at the best way of doing that whilst utilising public resources in the most effective way. And also, let's not remember staff resources, because this report says very clearly, and officers have expressed very clearly the briefings that we've had, the significant challenges and strain of hosting this event. Now, that's not a reason not to do the event, but it's a reality that we need to bear in mind as elected members, because we've got a duty not only to the citizens but also to our staff. And that's one point I want to make. I think there's another couple of points in terms of the strategic approach that needs to be taken. What this report very clearly says is that there will be a body of work undertaken by city development, who now have the focus for the delivery of events and an event strategy brought forward to committee that sets out the scale and deliverability of an event. And we've seen and have referenced one event in terms of COP26, which was hugely successful, not least because it brought some vibrancy across the whole city centre. I would contest one element that's been proposed, and I say this as a ward councillor for the Strathmartin Ward. Somebody mentioned, I think it was Craig, that mentioned reinvigorate the local economy. The Flower and Food Festival has no adjacent businesses that would benefit directly from this event. Many people drive. It is both a city-wide event and a regional event, and people come from out with. It isn't one that necessarily, if I speak to the bakers in Crippington, they benefit from, or the shop in Adler, for example. So I think it's a, I suppose, a false argument to suggest that this event directly contributes to the economy north of the Kingsway. I think that's a false premise. What we're talking about here is the potential to modernise, reinvigorate and continue to adapt something that fits the bill for what people, and I mean that in the broadest possible sense, would like to see going forward and brings some vibrancy, but also reinvigorates the economy. Because if you can imagine 20,000 people attending an event, for example, within the city centre, the spillover effect and the benefit into the local economy very directly is going to be tenfold that of hosting it in Camden Park. So I think it's a false argument to suggest that somehow hosting it in Camden Park benefits the economy of the Strathmartin Ward. It doesn't. But this could potentially benefit the wider economy of Dundee if we were able to host it in a space like we've discussed today as well. And I think many of the arguments have probably been proposed at the various stages at which the event has adapted. We mentioned earlier about, you know, the long history, Fairmuir to Magdalen Green, Magdalen Green onwards. And I'm sure at every point and juncture, the same arguments have been put forward, but the event has continued to grow and adapt with the needs and requirements both of the city, the city council, and of those that participate in it. And I want to see a very long and prosperous future that involves a whole cross-section of the city in a way that perhaps isn't at this point in time. And on that basis, I don't think we're in a position where we can commit to delivering a model which has been in place for a considerable period of time, and which, as the officers have attested to, currently isn't deliverable within the overall envelope of what's available and with the constraints that we have on staffing. And I think as leader of the council, I certainly have to be mindful of the pragmatic elements to this and the deliverability of what we're talking about. And there should be no question about the ambition of this administration. I look forward to the report coming forward. And it's all being excited with what could be delivered as a result of taking this pause and allowing officers to do the work that we want to see them do, to deliver something of scale, of benefit, and of some ambition that reflects the future of Dundee, not just the past of Dundee. And so I will move that we stick to the recommendations in the report as my motion. And I can see that Mark is going to second. Mark, would you like to speak?
Yeah, thanks for that, Convenor. I won't say too much, because you've obviously touched on everything I've taken a comment on. I have to say, as per usual, you've covered everything. I think the important part here is we've got to look forward. And I think the important part in looking forward is we've got an events team, which will look at events. And I think utilising city development events team is actually a good example of what we could do well. Summer Streets, you've touched upon, the St Andrews Day, Christmas presentation, the Winter Fest, Kanzing Karate, and the music event next year, and the ongoing music events we have. The events team are experienced in doing all this. And I think I'm looking forward to actually seeing the event strategy, which I requested a number of months ago, to see what's going to be on offer. And I think hopefully, I'm not saying I think, I hopefully will see something being offered, which is going to be quite substantial. And it's going to be a focus, as you've touched on, Convenor, with regards to the climate change and sustainability and the environmental. And I think that's environmentally, and I think that's really the important part going forward. Bailey MacPherson touched upon flower festivals. This wasn't a flower festival, this was a Flower and Food Festival. So making comparisons with other local authorities, as councillor Coleman touched upon, is not really the right thing to do, half they say. And I have to point out, we don't have a lack of ambition at all. The ambition is there to make an event, as we do with other events, a thing that attracts people to the city. The economy will benefit from that. And as you've touched upon, Convenor, having it at Camperdown, there's very little impact on the local economy. Most of the people who tend to live and work in Dundee go to it. The numbers coming from outside the city have to be not really great enough to actually have that massive impact, but in a central location, and hopefully we might find a good location for this, whether it be inside or outside, there's been people talking about using inside events as well as outdoor events. The event itself will actually help the economy. If we can get the numbers and increase numbers coming to an event like that within the city centre, we can actually look to drive the economy, look to drive the local economy with small businesses, especially through these difficult times that we're having at the moment. There's also something, if I can just go on slightly longer, with regards to the proposal, the amendments put forward. We're talking about commercial sponsorship. The team are already looking at that. That's extremely difficult in these circumstances to get commercial sponsorship. But I do accept the fact that they will try as much as they can to look into this. And engaging with other local authorities, why wouldn't we? We're actually an outward-looking authority. We'll look to see if they want to get involved. But we've also got something on our doorstep, James Hutton. Nobody's touched upon that, really. We've got resources and stakeholders within the city. If we work together with them, we can create really a quite outstanding event. Yes, it can't be done in 2023, there's just not enough time. The team have got their calendar full, is probably the best way of putting it. But again, that's the advantage, what we can actually do. Do something slightly different, do something better, maybe slightly bigger. So I look forward to that and the support of your comments, Convenor, and the reports put forward tonight.
Thanks very much, Mark. And perhaps it's the Eden Festival of the future, given other important work that we're doing. So with all that said, we will go to the vote. Willie?
Okay, thank you very much, Convenor. Firstly, the motion by the convenor, seconded by councillor Flynn, is the report made read as submitted. The amendment is circulated by councillor Coleman, seconded by councillor Duncan. Convenor?
Motion.
Mr. Anderson?
Motion.
Lord Provost?
Motion.
Deputy Lord Provost?
Motion.
Bailey Dawson?
The motion.
Mr. Onakla?
Motion.
Mr. Flynn?
Motion.
Mr. Hunter?
Motion.
Mr. Lynn?
Motion.
Bailey Roberts? Bailey Roberts?
Motion.
Okay. Mr. Rome?
Motion.
Bailey Sors?
Motion.
Mr. Short?
Motion.
Mr. Smith?
Motion.
Mr. Talland?
Yeah, motion.
Thank you. Bailey Keenan?
Amendment.
Mr. Cookshank?
Amendment.
Mr. Finnegan?
Amendment.
Mr. McHugh?
Amendment.
Mr. McCarvin?
Amendment.
Mr. Malone?
Amendment.
Mr. Scullen?
Amendment.
Mr. Shears?
Amendment.
Bailey Wright?
Amendment.
Bailey MacPherson?
The amendment.
Councillor Coleman?
The amendment.
Councillor Creighton?
The amendment.
Councillor Duncan?
Amendment.
Bailey Scott? Bailey Scott?
Sorry, amendment.
Thank you very much. That's 15 for the motion and 14 for the amendment the motion's carried.
Okay, thank you, Willie. We'll move on to the next item.
Mr. Cookshank, item nine, Leisure and Culture Dundee Performance and Impact Report, this is for noting.
I think this is a really useful report, just to update all elected members on the fantastic work within leisure and culture, and also the significant challenges in providing that context. And I think it'll be lost on none of us that the pandemic has had a significant, significant impact on the ability to deliver services within leisure and culture, and also the return of customers in all their various forms, whether it be to libraries, sports centres, or some of the leisure facilities as well. So I think there are huge challenges, and I really want to thank Judy and the team for pulling together the information and providing us with that context, because I think it's really useful for us to understand both the scale of the opportunity, if I can put it in those terms, and also the scale of the challenges as you continue to wrestle and work with your staff to make sure that we've got the best that we possibly can in terms of those leisure and culture services. So I will just open it up to questions from colleagues. So Bailey MacPherson first?
Yeah, thanks, Convenor. The report is actually very topical, because I just had, just before the report arrived, they actually had an exchange of emails with Jane Geir, the head of Flybrain Information Services, regarding community library use, because they're asked questions about our various community libraries and how were they recovering in terms of footfall, you know, in-person attendance at libraries. And what's reassuring, it's a long way to go, but what's reassuring is that if we look on page 57, 5.2, the figure for 2122 in relation to in-person attendance at libraries was 244702. Nothing like what it was pre-pandemic, I fully accept. But this year, 2223, up to the end of November, was already 293468. So it's certainly heading in the right direction. But I suppose my question for officers is about, assuming there's someone from leisure and culture here, is what's been further done to promote library use? And what actually kicked off my question to Jane in the first place was some national information about the decline of library use across the country. And the need to engage with non-library users to encourage greater footfall into libraries, because I know we're in a more electronic age, but libraries have, you know, taken that on board, shall we say. And, you know, our libraries, and we have a very good network of community libraries, plus obviously central library in the city. And I'm just very keen that we continue to promote our libraries. So I was just really wondering if someone from leisure and culture Dundee can give us some reassurance on how we will further promote library use for those Dondones who are currently not a library member?
No better person to answer than Judy herself, who is on the call. Thank you, Judy. I would just offer, by way of quick response as well, I think your point's well made. And I certainly know from personal experience through my grandfather-in-law, if that's such a thing, the fantastic services that are provided by the library and the fact that they go above and beyond, but also the digital services that are available, which I use personally as a library user as well. So the final thing I was going to mention is also the support of staff within leisure and culture for the cost of living. So some of the initiatives that we've taken forward in recent weeks and months in terms of opening up those spaces and welcoming people to encourage them, not only to access the services, but to come there if they so require as well. So I just wanted to formally thank Judy and the team for their support with that as well. And Judy, if you want to comment on Fraser's question?
Yeah, thanks, Convenor, and thanks Bailey MacPherson for the question. It's one that libraries across the country are battling with at the moment. It's how to get people back and get their appetite back for, in particular, reading, but also accessing other services. So what the team is doing is heavily invested in working with colleagues in children and families to engage with schools, after-school clubs are coming back, and a whole host of activities for after school clubs are coming back and a whole host of activities for the population to come in during the day and, and make use of in terms of the, the internet access and supported clubs. We work very closely as well with the national bodies across Scotland. So we work with SLIC, Scottish Library and Information Council, and we're part of any national campaigns as well. But we also look at local activities as how we can get service promoted. We will look and, and I can come back to you in a bit more detail on the activities that we're doing to engage locally and nationally. But, but yes, it is at the front of our mind to, to engage with customers.
Can I just say, that's a very reassuring and helpful response from Judy. And I can only speak for my own community library at Blackness, where the staff, you know, arrange external talks, we've had children's activities, they got really involved in the West End Christmas fortnight. Couldn't speak more highly of the librarian staff at, at Blackness, and I'm sure that's replicated across the city. So I'm grateful for your response, Judy. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Fraser. And I'll come to councillor Creighton next. Michael?
Yeah, thank you, convener. Just a question. It's clear that's been a really challenging year for leisure and culture and obviously what's been described already with the pandemic. Also, the Olympia closure has not just been financial damaging, but also reputationally, and not just for leisure and culture, but the council and Dundee as a whole. As a newly elected member, can I ask about the arms length arrangement between ourselves and leisure and culture? Has it ever been reviewed? I was reading the twenty fifteen OC, OSCR report about the arms length kind of arrangement. And it talks about the kind of inherent risks. Now, obviously, it's a late hour and I don't propose amendment or anything like that. But I would just like to ask the officers tonight, reassurances about the partnership with leisure and culture Dundee? And do they get reviewed? And if they don't, why not?
It's slightly with the parameters of the report that's before us, which is about the deliverability of services. And Judy might want to come back out with the meeting rather than be put on the spot. And also, I think Greg might have a view in terms of just that, that direct question. So I'll come to Greg in the first instance. Greg?
Yeah, thanks, convener. And thanks councillor Creighton for the question. I mean, as you'll be aware, and you've touched on it, the Arms Length Organisation was set up, I think, back in around twenty ten for a number of reasons. Whilst we haven't reviewed whether or not the Arms Length Organisation is still one that we want to continue with, the report before you obviously clearly outlines the benefits that leisure and culture Dundee are providing to the community. In addition to that, Judy and myself and our wider teams are also looking at the service level agreements that are in place between leisure and culture Dundee and the council. So at this point, I could say that Arms Length Organisation delivers as per the report in front of you. And the service level agreements are what leisure and culture and the council are focusing on reviewing at this moment in time to bring them up to date.
Thanks, Greg. And I suppose the other thing, just to mention in terms of the wider benefits, as you've already alluded to, but also the opportunity to access wider partnerships and funding, which wouldn't necessarily be afforded directly to the council if we were to administer the services directly. And I think we've seen the benefit of that arms length approach and the independence of the organisation to be able to take those conversations forward as well. I see no further questions or comments on this. So, oh, just got there in time, Helen. So I'll come to you last and then we'll move on to the next item. So Bailey Wright?
Okay, thank you. Can I say I've been amazed at the Coldside Library, how they have enticed people in? They've started up arts classes. They have a local artist come in to do lessons. That's got great guns. They have a big attendance every Saturday. I know that they've purchased some guitars and they have somebody that plays guitar who's going to do some lessons as well. And they also have children's games, which is fascinating. Because it's, I think it's a computer game, but it's, it's not, it's, it's an actual fact and there's soldiers, no different people in it. And they have to play the game. And I must admit, I'm quite confused, but, but some of the kids that come in and play the game know exactly what they're doing and get a bit upset when the librarian actually wins, as she does sometimes, because she knows what the rules are. But that's the way to go. I, I see older people coming in and having a cup of tea or a cup of coffee and just, you know, sitting, looking at the papers and things like that. So I think we've got to praise the libraries because they are trying very hard to bring people back. And I know that they're succeeding in Coldside. I've got nothing but praise for them. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Bailey Wright. Sorry, I've gone off screen because I've lost connection on my laptop again. So I've joined via my iPad, so forgive me. With all of that, I don't see any further contributions. So thank you very much for those. And can I take this as agreed? Thank you. We'll move on.
Okay, thank you very much, convener. The remaining item, item ten, computer aided design software. You're asking the recommendations.
I think this is fairly self explanatory. Any questions? No? Can I take this as agreed? Okay, thank you. That is all the business. Thank you for your participation and I shall see you all very soon. Have a good week. Take care.
Thank you.
Bye.